We'll begin as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we will continue with public audience. And as always, there's two ways to participate. You can email your comments to townmanager@simsberry-ct.gov to have them distributed to each member of the Board of Selectmen, or you can register to address the board live via Zoom. And we have Joan Coe who registered. And Joan, are you with us? Can you hear me? Hi Joan, are you able to hear me? I think you might be muted. No. Melissa, I don't know if you can see if she's muted on our end.
There's just no audio connected at all. So I see the little video icon, but there's no microphone showing up next to her name. So I think the audio is just not connected.
Okay.
Take the whole thing?
All right, Joan, here you go. What I would suggest is that we we continue, and then if Joan's able to connect to audio, we can return to public audience.
Yep.
All right. Yeah, let me know if she's, if she comes back. I'll, I'll just go right into my first selectman's report and see where we are at that point. I'll begin with a brief Meadowwood update. Very excited to share that the town has officially acquired the Meadowwood property, 288 acres off of Firetown, Hoskins and County roads. On Saturday, this coming Saturday, October 16th, we'll be holding a ribbon cutting in conjunction with the Trust for Public Land, which played a vital role in the acquisition. All are welcome to attend. It'll take place from 10:30 a.m. to noon at 170 Hoskins Road. There's a rain date that's scheduled for Thursday, October 21st at 3:30 p.m. The town, the Fire District and the Main Street Partnership will be working collaboratively to address the longstanding issue of spotty cellphone service. Oh, do we have Joan back? I wasn't sure if I was able to hear her. No, no. All right. I'll continue. So we're working to address the issue of spotty cellphone service in some parts of town. We frequently hear from residents who are concerned about this issue as it has an impact on public safety, economic development and quality of life. And the town invites you to participate in a short survey that will allow us to baseline gaps in coverage. You can find that survey under News and Announcements on the town website. The Aging and Disability Commission, the Department of Community and Social Services and the Simsbury Public Library are hosting a sensory-friendly trunk or treat event, October 25th, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. outside of True Value Hardware. Costumes are welcome and there'll be activities and food provided. Please RSVP to Diana Yaisley, yaisley2@concast.net. During November, the Simsbury Public Library will offer a community read event featuring three books, The Namesake. The Namesake.
Can I talk at the public audience? I had to disconnect.
Yep. Hi Joan, I'm glad you're with us. Let me just finish my report and I'll come right back to you.
Thank you.
Sure thing. The Simsbury Public Library is hosting a community read event featuring three books. One for adults, The Namesake by Jhumpa Lahiri, The Knockout by Sajni Patel for teenagers, and American as Panier Pie by Supriya Kalcar for children. Connecting with this work, the November 4th, the Let's Talk topic will be the immigrant experience in Connecticut. Not specifically focused on this one demographic, but immigrant experiences more generally. It's a virtual event from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. and registration will be available on the library's website under Virtual Programs. There is a ribbon cutting scheduled for Thursday, October 14th, tomorrow at 4:30 p.m. at the former Tower Ridge Country Club, 149 Road. The owners, Simsbury Real Estate Holdings, will outline the overall plan for the property and introduce three new tenants, Tower Ridge Disc Golf, Talkeet View Collective and Healing Meals Community Project. Last but not least, Community for Care is holding a mindfulness workshop at the Simsbury Public Library, November 10th at 6:30 p.m. The event will be in person. More details will be available on the library's website as we get a bit closer. Also a reminder that the library has a full calendar of virtual programs, nearly every weekday for people of all ages. And we've got Joan Coe who is joining us with public audience. Joan, I'm glad you were able to get the audio work.
I finally figured out how to get the Zoom working. Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. On November 2nd, 2021, the taxpayers of Simsbury have the opportunity to vote to the policy boards and commissions that will affect the residents for two years. The Board of Selectmen, the legislative branch, consists of six members and should be judged on their positions and votes. Town Manager Maria Caprioli is the executive of the town and sits on the Board of Selectmen meeting in advisory capacity without a vote. However, the lines between the executive branch and legislative branch have been joined with the Board of Selectmen acting as cheerleaders, condoning the abuse of power of Town Manager Maria Capriola. The morale in town hall is at an all-time low with staff leaving due to a lack of communication, disrespect and retribution. The Board of Selectmen has continually increased the town manager's salary while the union employees have not had a raise in three years. Their contract is in arbitration. Every meeting, the Board of Selectmen has public audience where residents can voice their concerns. According to First Selectman Eric Wellman, the board should not respond to comments. My comments are not only ignored, but they are no follow-ups. I have never heard from any of the Selectmen. However, over time, Eric Wellman has commented on people who agree with his narrative. Sue Messino's comments on her interest in the Meadowwood acquisition has Eric Wellman not only responding to her comments, but stated that he would help her acquire signatures forcing a referendum vote. A presentation on concerns about the town mandate for wearing masks indoors is hurting business and giving parents the right to choose the use of masks for their children had lengthy responses from Selectmen, First Selectman Eric Wellman and Town Manager Capriola. When Bob Hensley raised concerns about the dangerous conditions at the Rotary Park playground at the Meadows with vandalism and litter in the park, both First Selectman Eric Wellman and Town Manager Maria Capriola responded. This appears to be selective enforcement of the rules set by First Selectman Eric Wellman while the Board of Selectmen are silent. Eric Wellman should not be re-elected to the Board of Selectmen since his actions are comprised, compromised with selective enforcement and his position on continuing the contract with town manager who consistently abuses her power by retaliating against town employees. The present Board of Selectmen should be judged on their voting record, not on their name recognition. We need representatives that align themselves with the residents, not the town manager. First Selectman races with Deputy Selectman Sean Askem running against Selectman Wendy McIntousis. Sorry about that Wendy, I can't pronounce your name. Sean has continually sided with Town Manager Maria Capriola on labor relations, voting for dismal, for dismissal of employees after being made aware of the abusive and questionable behavior of Town Manager Maria Capriola. Sean's voting record is a dismal display of playing politics to get re-elected instead of voting on the merit of the issues. Deputy Selectman Sean Askem should not be re-elected. Travis Schweitzer, graduate of the Naval Academy, a Navy SEAL and a police commission voted for the police commission to eliminate public audience on their agenda, a person's First Amendment right. Did the Navy Academy include people's First Amendment rights under the Constitution as part of their curriculum? Did Travis Schweitzer swear to uphold the Constitution as a naval officer? Simsbury is not a dictatorship and we should not have our electors eliminate public audience as part of their platform. Travis Schweitzer should not be elected to the Board of Selectmen. Now is the time to elect new members to the Board of Selectmen. Term limits are a necessity for responsive government. I recently received a response from the town in response to my Freedom of Information request for contract. For the contract, Police Chief Boulter has with Badge Quest, a consulting company that evaluates new hires and internal promotion. The town's response stated, quote, "Please be advised that no such documentation exists," end quote. How can Chief Boulter have a higher consulting firm without a contract when the town requires a contract for services? Did Chief Boulter bid out the need for services to other companies? Is this just cause for dismissal? Badge Quest has been hired by Chief Boulter on a number of occasions from promotional evaluations of the Simsbury Police Department. This all the time came to light when Chief Boulter asked the Board of Ethics for an opinion regarding a potential conflict of interest stemming from Chief Boulter being hired on a period of basis by Badge Quest. The Board of Ethics approved the request, although they never discussed the background and questionable activities and investigations of retired Chief Robert J. Pomeroy of the Plymouth, Massachusetts Police Department, with reports available on the internet. Is the Board of Selectmen interested in reviewing my comments? And all of my comments were posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe and Facebook. And I do appreciate the fact that you let me come in. I did have a problem getting on Zoom. But this is the new world. So thank you very much.
This is the new world. Joan, thank you. And I'll turn it over to Maria next for the town manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? All right. I will lead off with an update on our coronavirus numbers. Some really good news to report with the data that was released last Thursday. We were trending downward quite considerably from the previous week. While we were at orange status, you may recall that that is based on a two-week basis. So the week prior, we did have 30 cases, but in the most recent week, we had 12 positive cases. So our overall rate per 100,000 was 11.8% and our positivity rate was down slightly to 2.9%. In terms of number of new positive weekly cases, that was our lowest number for any week since July 31st. So again, I think that's some really, you know, really good positive news for us to report there. Just a reminder, we are monitoring the data closely. I am prepared to lift the mask order when we've met the metrics that we shared previously for rescission of the order. Again, I think our local data, as well as the Farmington Valley Health District data as a region, is trending well towards those established metrics for rescission of the mask order. And I do remain optimistic if we continue at this pace that we'll be able to rescind that in the near term. You may recall that the Farmington Valley Health District supported the region being at moderate or low and Simsbury being at yellow or gray for two incubation periods. Additional factors such as outbreaks, hospitalizations, vaccinations, et cetera, will also be taken into account when evaluating that. While it can be difficult to measure the effectiveness of prevention strategies, since our mask order was issued, we ultimately did not reach red alert status, which is the highest level of risk for the DPH municipal alert system. Comparatively, seven of the other nine towns in our health district did reach red alert status at some point during that same time period. I have been fielding some questions. My office has been fielding some questions from members of the public in terms of a number of communities that have mask orders, who's rescinded orders, who's revised orders. And what we've been sharing with folks is that at this point in time, there are no reporting requirements from municipalities to report that data to any sort of centralized gathering point, whether it's at the state or a council of governments, et cetera. We are fortunate in that our council of governments has taken a bit of a lead in this area. And we are, they are asking other council of governments to share with them towns that have implemented mask orders. So it does rely on towns self-reporting to their council of governments and then reporting to our council of governments. But to our knowledge, that is the most comprehensive list of towns statewide. And again, the Capital Region Council of Governments is maintaining that list for us. Again, good news in terms of the Farmington Valley data. While they remained at substantial, they were ever so close to reaching moderate this past week. So the moderate threshold is 10 to 49.99 cases per 100,000 and they hit 50.1 this past week. So again, very, a very good news there as they're trending downwards. They did share, I think, a very good CDC article with us on the effectiveness of the use of cloth masks and slowing the spread of the virus. So we have provided a link to that information in the report. They also asked that we just remind folks in the community that children under the age of 12 are still not yet eligible for the vaccine and are vulnerable as a result. And that mask wearing by both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals is essential in helping to protect them until they can become eligible for the virus, excuse me, the vaccine. They are gearing up to prepare to vaccinate that next group of children once they are eligible to receive the vaccine. So really appreciate their planning efforts in that regard. Also in the report, we have an update on the status of our vaccination numbers for the community. And lastly, for our pandemic update, just a reminder that the Simsbury Main Street Partnership is working with the Health District to help the restaurant industry get their workers vaccinated. So if you are in the restaurant industry and are interested in taking advantage of that, please contact the Health District. For Board of Selectmen Business, good news, you were able to secure a date for our annual tri-board budget meeting with the Board of Finance and Board of Education. We have secured the date of December 1st at 5:30 p.m. At this time, the location is to be determined in terms of whether it will be in-person or hybrid or fully virtual, but we will keep you updated on that. For newly elected officials who are not yet sworn in at that point in time, we will certainly enable them the ability to participate in the meeting. They just wouldn't be able to vote in the event that there was a formal vote taken. And just adding a bit to First Selectman Wellman's comments regarding the Meadowwood acquisition. Again, I think this is just a really incredible acquisition for the community. And I, and I do believe it's going to have a meaningful, positive impact on our community for generations to come. And it's really been an honor to work with you all on this project for our community. And I hope I could just take a few moments and offer some acknowledgements and thanks because so many people just work so tirelessly on this project. And, you know, first, I really wanted to thank the Open Space Committee. They just had so much enthusiasm and ongoing support for this project. I really wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen. You had so much vision for this property and just the leadership that you demonstrated. And again, thank you for that. I think most importantly, I want to acknowledge our community. When this went to referendum, 87% of the people who voted supported this acquisition. And that was record budget referendum turnout as well. So again, we couldn't have done this without such an, again, overwhelming, you know, positive response from the community. First staff, I'd like to acknowledge Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo, as well as staff at the Trust for Public Land. This was an incredibly complex transaction with multiple funding agencies. And they just, again, just worked tirelessly to get us to the finish line. I'd also really like to acknowledge some of our staff members, Jeff Shea, Tom Tiversky, Orlando Cassiano, Mike Liddon, Amy Meriwether and Tom Fitzgerald in particular for their hard work the last two years on this acquisition. And then just a quick update on our Meadowwood barns. I know it's quite a topic this past week and over the weekend. But as you may recall, last December, we had shared some information with the Board of Selectmen that the property had 15 barns. Some of those barns, we believe to be, after assessment, in good condition for continued agricultural use. Some were candidates for restoration efforts while some had deteriorated past the point of really being able to be rehabilitated. Sadly, shortly after we closed on the project, one of the structures took a very sudden turn and the structure became unsound and unfortunately was deemed in need of being demolished. So again, that was incredibly unfortunate. The contractor did complete that work last Friday and the debris was removed from the site on Monday. I do just also want to make sure that the public is aware that during this acquisition process, and again, many thanks to the Trust for Public Land, they were able to secure at least $400,000 in grant funds for us to work on some restoration efforts for a couple of the barns. So we may be able to preserve them for historic preservation purposes. So that's again, one of the really positive, good things that's going to be coming post-acquisition. In the meantime, we are going to also be taking some steps to do some interim measures to stabilize some of the barns that are not in good condition. And then just quickly, Department News and Notes. Very pleased to announce that our Parks Superintendent Orlando Cassiano has been named Parks Professional of the Year by the Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association. Very exciting. Orlando is just an absolute treasure. He does amazing work for our community. He's been with us now for over 30 years. He's just a great resource and so proud of him and very pleased to announce that he has received this award. He will be recognized at an award ceremony coming up in November. And also really wonderful news, our new Hotbrook Landing Park was also recognized by the Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association. And that is for the Park of Merit Award. So again, congratulations to everybody who worked on that, had the vision for that project. And that award will also be given to the town at the November award ceremony. And some great news from Finance, they were awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence by the Government Finance Officers Association for its comprehensive annual financial report. So congratulations to Amy and her team for their good work on that. For Public Works, just reminding residents, we have a Household Hazardous Waste Event coming up this Saturday, October 16th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Public Works Garage. And just another piece of information I don't think a lot of folks are aware of is that in addition to household hazardous waste, if you have personal papers that need to be shredded for each household hazardous waste event, residents can bring up to two boxes of personal papers that we will make sure are properly shredded for you. I think that was something we had a recent inquiry about and just we wanted to make sure that we highlighted that for our residents. And other news from Public Works, this is really exciting. Our very first traffic calming project was at Knott's Road and West Mountain Road. Some folks may have seen the temporary traffic calming installation that we did last fall. We spent time studying that intersection and ultimately were able to come up with a permanent redesign of that intersection and a permanent, essentially, traffic calming measure. And our study did find that speeds were reduced in addition to some qualitative data from the neighborhood about feeling the positive impact of speeds being reduced in that neighborhood. So many thanks to Tom Roy and his team for that. And again, thanks to the Board of Selectmen and our voters for supporting the funding for that project this year. From Social Services, a reminder, we have the annual flu clinic coming up on October 19th. Folks who would like an appointment should contact the Farmington Valley Nurses Association. And they're also sponsoring the annual holiday program. And that's for folks who may be interested in sponsoring family, as well as families who would like to participate in that program as recipients. So if that is something that you or your business is interested in participating in, please don't hesitate to contact Social Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. I just wanted to see if there were any questions about Maria's report. And I see Jackie's raising her hand. Hello, Jackie.
Hi, just a couple of comments and hopefully discussion. Maria, the mask mandate and looking at Farmington Valley, looking at those charts, we have eight other towns plus Simsbury that have stayed the same or gone down. None of the other towns have a mask mandate. So I think we really need to consider the data. There is one town that didn't. And in the seven weeks, I know in your report, you say, "We haven't gone up, but we also haven't gone down." So if we wait with your metrics, that is going to kill the businesses. We're going to be at probably November, right? End of November at the earliest. I really think we need to think about this. We are not moving. I think we're safe. I think we need to push health and safety. We need to have people get vaccinated, but we already know we're at 91% with anybody who's available to get vaccinated. And then the next thing is the flu shot. So I think that's what we need to encourage. On the cellphone survey Eric had in his report, just want to let everybody know the deadline is tomorrow. So if you have not done, it's less than two minutes, please do what Eric said, log on and please do that survey. It's done tomorrow. So, and then the last thing was Meadowwood. I know we have a plan or we're talking about restorations for the barns and I don't expect an answer tonight, but I'm hoping that we can get information to the public about what we are going to do with the barns. There's a lot of questions. There's people that are very concerned. So I think if we could get that plan out there, maybe what a structural engineer has looked at and just let everybody know what our plan is, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Did you want to add to, respond to any of what Jackie shared? Did I break up?
No.
Okay. I was just, I couldn't tell Maria if you wanted to jump in or if I should.
Would it make sense for me to answer some of Jackie's questions before? Why don't you start?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Great, super. Yeah, Jackie, thank you for mentioning the metrics. So I know I shared with the Board of Selectmen and I apologize, I can't recall if I had shared it in a town manager's report previously. The metrics that were recommended to us for rescission of the mask order was something that the Capital Region Health Directors worked on together as a team. I do know that they are planning, I believe, a public announcement of those recommended metrics, again, as a region sometime next week. There are some standalone health departments in our Capital Region. I did consult with one of the communities that does still have a standalone municipal department. And their metrics were similar in nature, but a bit different. So for example, instead of using yellow as the threshold to rescind, their standalone department recommended orange as the threshold to rescind. And I think, right, this is one of those challenges. And the governor and providing this at the local level as opposed to a regional level or a statewide level is that, you know, we see differences, right, in those recommendations. In regards to the local businesses, you know, again, my office has also fielded, you know, some questions or concerns from some individuals who are concerned that the mask, you know, order is impacting our local businesses. I would say that what I can offer is I think that there are folks with strong opinions on both sides. And what we've also heard is that there are folks in neighboring town who are coming here because, because we have the order and that they're choosing not to shop elsewhere because of the fact that they don't have an order in place. So I know this is a tough one because I think that we do have, you know, folks in our community and neighboring communities who have very strong opinions on both sides of this issue. But again, you know, I think that it's important for us to continue to monitor the data and to revise, you know, the order where appropriate, for sure.
But you can wear a mask here. See, we're just taking away that freedom of choice. So if people want to shop here and wear a mask, they can and they could have before the mandate. And, you know, again, just to my point, in using the stats that we, we have been using consistently, Farmington Valley Health, eight other towns are in single digits. Simsbury is not. Eight other towns without a mask mandate. So I think that that's something to consider.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, we are also the second largest town within the district. So typically, you know, in terms of, if you're just looking at the case numbers, we're typically, you know, the number one or two or maybe the third town with the highest case numbers, just again, on a proportional basis, because we do have the largest or second. Sorry, second largest population. Farmington's ahead of us by a few hundred people.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you. And then just quickly too, on the barns. Melissa and I were working on some communication, again, just because, again, we started to receive some questions about the barns and the condition of the barns from the public. And again, I know we had shared some of that information, but it was a bit ago. Right now it's like December. So we definitely thought it would be helpful to share some of that with the public that we are working on trying to get some of that information out in the next day or so for people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And Wendy, I saw you had a question.
Yeah, so it's just, I'm going to talk a little bit about the masks. I'm for masks. I wear them because it's, it's the law and I'm supposed to wear them in a store. But I also, just a little story is when this came around, one of the first people that I called was Sarah Nielsen to see what feedback she had for us from the business community. And at the time, she was for the mask and the businesses were also endorsing it. Some of the, you know, the stores were for it because it made it easier for their employees and things like that. So I felt comfortable in our decision at that point in time with her response as she's the closest to the business. She has pretty much changed her perspective and, you know, she sent us all the email today really emphasizing the change that she's seen and how it's impacting some of the small, it's really the smallest businesses in my, my feeling. Because if you go into Big Y, you're not next to anybody. But the smaller businesses are being impacted. And now her response is more to get rid of the mask mandate. She's not as for it as she was. And the chart showing that most of the surrounding towns are in yellow. And the chart showing that most of the surrounding towns are in yellow, you know, is one factor. And then the other factor for us is even if we get to yellow, it still could be a four week period. And my concern with that is it's going into the holidays. So to hurt the businesses in the holiday period, you know, that's just not something I want to do to a small shop like Ava Grace or Wine, et cetera. But, you know, I will shop somewhere if I want a bottle of wine or a necklace at Ava Grace. I'm not going to not shop there because I have to wear a mask. And I feel like I I do think it's selfish for people to deprive a business that we want to support because they have to go with the mask, but that's their values. So I just saying that I, you know, it's your decision, but that's how I'm starting to feel. The end is not that in sight. And that focusing more on vaccinations plus boosters are coming maybe this week for the J and J and Moderna audience that are older, but some younger. And also they're looking at vaccinations for children, which we could even potentially do some sort of clinics. They're going to push that soon. So that might help us get there faster. So I just wanted to express, you know, my thoughts on it.
Right. No, I agree, Wendy. Thank you. I think that's a fair point. And right. And I think, you know, to the advice we've received from the Health District, right? I mean, we don't want to be so rigid and the metrics that we're, you know, being kind of silly about how we're thinking about things. So for example, this week, you know, the Health the Health District as a region, right, was still technically substantial, but it was fifty point one versus forty nine point nine nine, right? So are we going to say, oh, well, we're going to throw that week away? No, I mean, that would just be, I think, unreasonable, right? So it's about, I think, just taking a reasonable approach to the data and the metrics and looking at some of those other factors as well. Absolutely.
And Sean?
Yeah. And thank you, Eric. And Maria, I appreciate the comment you just said because I think at the end of the day, I think the intent has been to be reasonable, right? And I know there's a bunch of unintended consequences here, some that we learned early on and some that we've learned along the way, right? Jackie, you and I sat with businesses and we didn't anticipate that even some business owners wouldn't shop in Simsbury because of their strong feelings on the loss of their right to choose. And that's not something honestly I anticipated when I sat down and talked about this. I don't agree with it, but it's not my decision to make for these folks. And, you know, we are dealing with that reality. And I don't know if you know, it's a wash on the number of people leaving town, not shopping as opposed to coming in. All I know is what the businesses are saying and that their sales are down. And I feel for them. I don't know if it's because of the mask mandate. It certainly feels like it could be. It could also be because of COVID. It could also because of economic, there's a lot to it, but the bottom line is these businesses are struggling. Do I think it's your fault as the town manager or ours for supporting it? No, I don't. I think as I summarized to someone the other day, I think, I think you made the decision and obviously you've articulated it. With public safety in mind, Jackie, as you said, right, it's a life and safety issue. And I think that's always been the priority. And, you know, what you and I have talked about privately, Maria, over the last week and a half is I'm asking you to consider continuing the life and safety issue, which I think you are, right, and making an informed decision. But I think the reality is, is we wanted folks to wear masks to keep everybody safe. But we've got the unintended consequences of business owners having to confront patrons. And in some cases ask them to leave their store and in other cases let them violate the mandate. Because what we didn't anticipate this time is that people aren't following it and they don't want to. And they know there's no one that's going to come to make them wear a mask. And it's, so it's essentially we've got what I think Jackie asked for, which is the right to choose and that the majority of the businesses are gonna just let people do what they want. So essentially, we've got ninety, ninety-five percent of the people wearing masks and that five or 10% don't. So it's an interesting, it's an interesting crossroads for are we making the impact with the order that we intended to? And I don't know, I'm not a scientist, whether the answer is yes or no. I have an opinion, but it doesn't matter what my opinion is. But anyways, I think as a board and as a community and from a life and safety standpoint, you know, as Jackie said, do we focus on vaccines and use some of the ARPA money to go whole hog on vaccine clinics? And otherwise to get that population that while we are ninety-one percent, there is a population in that mid middle range of age that is at a lower vaccination, right? Do we focus there? Do we focus on flu? You know, all Jackie, I think you brought up a really a lot of good thoughtful things. I'm not, I'm not I'm not in a position to tell Maria, hey, do X or do Y. You know, I made the decision I did back in August to support the mandate. I personally believe in masks, even though I hate wearing them. They drive me freaking crazy. But, you know, I've got two kids that can't get vaccinated at home and, you know, that's a decision that my family has made for us. So this is a really tough one. And I know it's very personal for people, but what I've learned despite my sermons of the past, and I promise Chris I'll stop in a second, is that there's a ton of unattended consequences here that's gone well beyond the life and safety intent. And I think that was pure and good intent. And as you make your decision, Maria, and as you evaluate this, I'm really heartened to hear that you're willing to, again, and I know you are for both what you said tonight and privately, to look at it beyond the hard and fast, there's gotta be four weeks of yellow. And, you know, I think you were telegraphing to us earlier, you see an end to this in sight relatively soon based on what you're seeing. And I'm going to trust that that's going to happen long before the holidays here. You know, and again, as I said a couple of weeks ago, and I'll end on this, people need an out from this darn pandemic. We're all exhausted from it. And I feel it feels like this is a hill that everybody wants to take a stand on because it it's one that's in our face and we want to feel like we're getting back to normal. So I mean, I'm encouraged by all the thoughts tonight. And again, I think there's a real impact to our community. But again, the intent was was life and safety and the best of intentions. So, you know, I encourage you to keep looking at this every day like I think you are, Maria. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we move on to selection action tonight.
Well, one, one thing I wanted, we haven't talked about, and I think we are the, we, I feel that to a certain extent, the constituents have, you know, questions as to why we we each may have individually supported this. And I'll just give my own personal perspective because I don't think anybody should be out there on their own. We are a team. We don't need to, you don't have to all be in agreement, but I think we should support each other. And when we have valid valid concerns of our own or rationale, we should share them, not let them be kept and kept. My perspective was always education. And that was, I have got four children in the school. And I understand that many business owners in town may not have kids that are still in school, but I would argue that my, my, you know, bar charge is first is to safety. And we always leave with safety, always leave with education, everything else after that sort of cascades down. So we don't have, we didn't have a hybrid model this year. You either in school or out of school. Last year was an incredibly difficult year. If you talk to any educator, they will tell you that the results by and large across the school average were worse than they had been in the years prior. And not only were, not only were the results from an educational standpoint down, but the mental health issues that we we've seen, we've seen crop up, I think are significant. And I've seen in my own family, it was a concern that I was walking into. And although our population is mandated to have to the teachers to be vaccinated, it, if we, as we've seen, the uptick in the Delta variant was with, it's interesting enough, is with school age kids. I've gotten more positive COVID notifications in the first month of school than I did in all of the six months last year. How, why, how is that happening specifically amongst the children? It's, you know, I don't have that answer. But for me, it was, we couldn't sacrifice our school system. We couldn't sacrifice putting what those folks had already done for us last year. And the fact that we didn't have an alternative model. And if a teacher got sick, that teacher goes down, right? There's no, and then what replaces that teacher? A fantastic substitute potentially. But again, the rhythm and rhyme of those kids' lives was going to be turned upside down if we could not return them to a consistent educational experience. So that's where I, that's where I came from and led with my concern around from a safety perspective was let's get our schools started, let's get them back up and running and let's get them moving forward. And the way that I, the best way that I saw to do that was to add an additional layer of protection to stop the spread of the variant around our town. And that was my perspective. So I just wanted to share that as far as how I came to partly came to my decision.
Thank you.
I just want to see if there's anything else that anyone wanted to share.
Eric, can I just, for Chris, I completely agree, but I just want to make it clear, we're talking about the town mask mandate. We can't do anything with Board of Education and with the kids in school.
Correct. But if we send, if we bring, if our, if our adult population increases its, its infection rate, drives it into their children, their children go into the school, then infect the school, the school employees, we've got a bigger issue. That was my concern. So that's where I was coming, that's where I was coming from. Not about, not about vaccine, not vaccinating the adults, but we know that a lot of the cases are breakthrough cases, we've seen it. The vaccine is not, it's not the end all be all. It's kryptonite out there. So that was my primary concern.
Eight towns around us without a mask mandate have lower numbers than we do.
Great. They may have lower numbers. I chose to make the decision that I made big to ensure that our school systems launched successfully at the time that we had, we made the decision. Hindsight's always twenty twenty, folks, in every aspect. We're going to talk about hindsight later on with fun balance. So I just like that's, I wanted to get out there because you shouldn't be on your own. Especially in your viewpoints and not having, and not having you be supported and Maria and Sean or whichever. So I just feel like it's, it's my, it's I owe it to the town to sort of express why, how I came to where I got. But certainly with, with, with us moving the direction we are, this conversation should be broadened.
Okay, I just wanted to make it clear, the town versus the schools.
Yeah. Okay, before we move on, I just wanted to make sure folks can hear me because my internet's been a little unstable. All right. Okay, cool. All right, I'm going to move on to our selectmen action tonight. An item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of seven thousand fifty-two dollars and forty-two cents? And to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
Wendy, Wendy, I'll second it.
Moving this along.
Wendy and Sean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi. Item B is the Gifts of Love donation for a farm stand. So as you know, Gifts of Love maintains a farm on town property by the Simsbury Airport. And they're interested in constructing a farm stand. And I just wanted to see who, who wanted to take the lead on providing more context around this item.
Yeah, I can, I can take that one. So Gifts of Love is going to be the recipient of a grant from the Department of Agriculture. Part of that grant process, they need to make a financial contribution. They would like to purchase a farm stand that they would be using to sell vegetables or to provide vegetables at no cost to eligible clients. And it's sort of a storage type building that they would be using as the farm stand. And so a couple of pieces, the granting agency, because we own the property, would like to see a letter of support from this body. And then, of course, because of our gift and donation policy, because the asset is worth more than fifteen hundred dollars, the board would need to accept the asset. Another piece to this, as with all of our properties, if there's any permitted work on the property, I'll just need to sign off on save the building permit for, for instance. And then the last piece to the seven, is that in the past, when folks have done work on the farm, whether it was an Eagle Scout or Gifts of Love, the board has typically waived the local permitting fees, particularly since Bull Ben ultimately come to own the infrastructure. So if the board was interested in doing that this evening, we estimate that the permitting fees will be, the local permitting fees would be around eighty-five dollars. So we have a handful of motions to that effect, if the board is in fact supportive of letting them have the building for the vegetable stand.
Thanks, Maria. Does anyone have any questions?
Eric, it's Mike. I'm in favor of this. The Gifts of Love has helped out the town, Social Service Department quite a bit with donations of vegetables and stuff through the year. So I really think this is a real positive thing. And I so appreciate them paying the state tax so that we don't have to pay that very much tongue in cheek. But I think this is a good thing that we should, I would like to see us support.
Thanks, Mike. Agreed. Any other, any other questions or? Okay, great. My internet's a little unstable and some of your videos froze frozen. So if, and don't raise your hand, just jump in if there's anything anyone wants to share, but I'm going to read the motion. Is there a motion effective October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one to approve the building of a structure for use as a farm stand on the town's property farm, leased by Gifts of Love and to accept the subsequent infrastructure once completed as a donation to the town? And also authorize Town Manager, the Town Manager to sign the permit and land use applications related to the structure on behalf of the town of Simsbury? And to approve the waiver of local fees for the permit.
I'll move that. I don't know if Eric can hear me.
Jackie moved it. Yeah, he said, and the application. There he is.
I'll second it.
All right. So Eric, yeah, Jackie, make the motion. Mike seconded it. You with us?
He's frozen.
All those in favor?
Yeah, thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Eric's in favor. That's a, that's a six, nothing for the, for the clerk.
Thanks, Sean. I hope I'm back. Appreciate you jumping in there.
You're back now. Okay.
All right.
Don't forget, don't forget to fill out your, your, your survey on cell service, Eric. Okay.
Hey, I'm in Town Hall right now.
It's the worst spot in town.
Item C is the proposed Spirit Council partnership with First Church. Spirit Council has been holding a Let's Talk Series and there's an opportunity for Spirit to get a grant from the Hartford Foundation. But this particular grant needs to either go to a five oh one C three nonprofit or a faith-based organization. And Spirit Council is hoping to team up with First Church for this grant application and speaker series. I just wanted to see if there were any questions or anything staff wanted to add on this item.
We're really excited to partner with First Church as a fiduciary and fiscal agent first Simsbury Spirit Council. And we're really happy that we can take advantage of this possible grant opportunity from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. Spirit Council intends to use the funding to potentially hire some speakers or presenters to come to their Let's Talk Series to focus on the housing and equity in Simsbury. So we're really excited and we'd like to thank you for considering this opportunity. And hopefully we'll get awarded some funds.
Hey, thanks, Kristin. Other questions? Okay, let me find the motion. Is there a motion effective October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one to extend our support for the Simsbury First Church of Christ Grant Application to the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving's Community Education on Housing Segregation Grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars. The purpose of the grant funds would be to support the town's Let's Talk Series in providing engagement and educational opportunities for town residents around the areas of housing, diversity and inclusivity should the grant be awarded. Further to approve the development and execution of a memorandum of agreement between First Church and the town regarding the Let's Talk Partnership as approved to form by the town attorney and also to authorize the town manager to execute all the necessary documents to finalize this partnership.
I'll move that.
Second.
I heard Wendy and Sean seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Thank you, Kristin. Item D is the proposed short-term rental ordinance. So tonight we've, you know, been talking about this issue now for about a couple of years. A work group was formed prior to the pandemic to develop an ordinance to regulate the short-term rental market. Jackie Batos and Chris Peterson serve on that work group. And I just wanted to turn it over to either or both.
Sure, Eric. Jackie, you want to, you want to say a thing, anything first?
I, I'm absolutely thrilled to be at this point and to give it to. I, I'm absolutely thrilled to be at this point and to give it to Florida Selectmen to review and then honestly and seriously to give it to zoning as a tool that they can use. I think we did a lot of good work and it will be very useful. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, it's just a little bit of background for the, for the, for the community as a whole. The town does not have a, an ordinance or any sort of, you know, guidepost relative to short-term rentals. I don't think that the town has, had, had a big market for short-term rentals. There wasn't a big, there wasn't something really to, to grasp a hold of and drive something like this in the past or previously. It's all seemed to a certain extent, the proliferation of, of owner-driven rental economy that's out there that's taken hold enabled by a technology and such. We tried one, one, you know, one overarching premise was that we tried not to legislate to any one issue. We were, we were compelled to, to bring together a group of thoughtful folks to address the issue finally because of some concerns we had seen relative to some properties in town. But again, I think when you look at, for the rest of the board, the community that reads the ordinance, we certainly, I think, held to that tenant, which is, which was not to legislate to one particular problem because that is not serving the community as a whole. I do want to just address one other thing. The length of this was, was, it was interrupted by the pandemic, which I think was, was good to a certain extent, because there was no renting rentals being, being undertaken. So we had a break, but it also broke up the process from an efficiency standpoint. I take full responsibility for probably A, not running some very efficient meetings and B, for letting it sort of move to the, along the continuum that it did. Just want to make note of that. But I also want to highlight the folks who donated a ton of time behind the scenes. From a town staff perspective, wouldn't have been able to do this without Tom Fitzgerald, Jeff Shay, Mike Lynn and Henry Vega for certain. And from the participants, along with Jackie, Liz Peterson, Ron Jodis and Bruce Elliott. Good spirited conversation, good community involvement, three individuals who brought varying perspective and drove us, drove the process. I probably infuriated at some points, but pushed through and we are at the point we are today. And I appreciate everyone's participation and perspective. So like to just present this for, to, to bring it to the board's selectmen.
Thank you.
Well said, Chris.
I want to see if there were any, any questions or any comments anyone wanted to share. Let me find the motion. Is there, where is it? There we go. Is there a motion effective October 13th, 2021 to set a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed short-term rental ordinance for 6 o'clock PM on Monday, November 8th, 2021?
Oh, moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 That's the most enthusiastic moving and seconding I've heard so far.
I would just say as a comment, can I just, just say, I would, I would look forward to how this ordinance does infringe upon people's property rights. Because as I've drawn the line before on wells and water ordinances and much like we just debated in the mask world, we're, we're infringing on people's property rights when we start telling what they can and can't do in their homes. So I look forward to that discussion. We don't have to have it now, but just looking forward to it.
I'll let you read the ordinance. Come prepare, Sean. Read it. Tell me if there's any infringement. But I'll also follow up, that I always would follow up and something I learned from you, Sean, is that it's an ordinance. And as Jackie and I always sort of looked at, looked at through that lens, there may be unintended consequences because we haven't experienced the use of it yet. And if those consequences do come and those, and so let's, let's not look, let's, let's understand. An ordinance is what it is. It's fungible. It gives the learning documents. It's, it's, it's a live document. It's a live ordinance. So we had that flexibility.
Thank you.
Well, if the water conversation was any preview, this is going to be a spirited discussion.
Buckle up, my friends.
Get her done.
We're going to be discussing in item E, the year-end transfers and closeout. This is an item that is on our agenda about this time each year. For this discussion, I thought it would be helpful. First, if someone were to screen share and share the staff proposals for year-end transfers. And perhaps while we're doing that, Maria, could you provide a little bit of context for the public? Why we have year-end savings and what drove the year-end savings in particular this year?
Yeah, Eric, actually Amy will lead off just with a quick overview of sort of the year-end snapshot. And then we will pull up that chart that you are referencing and go into that in a bit more detail.
And please, and please zoom in because it's, I've never seen anything printed smaller or taller than this. Okay?
Oh, okay. Got it.
Got to get those readers out there. They are.
They are, believe me.
Um, okay. So Melissa will actually pull up the transfers in a minute. I'm just going to pull up the financial statements and take you through how we got to be where we are. So as per usual, I'll start with the general fund and on the revenue side, I'll just scroll to the bottom here. And of course I need to widen my columns. And you can see that we ended the year with an excess revenue of about 1.8 million or 102% of budget. I'll just highlight some of the areas that got us there. It's kind of the same themes that I've talked about throughout the year as I've done the quarterly reports. But just to let you know where things finalized, you can see that we had revenues in excess of budget in the tax department of about 509,000. And as you recall, this is a planned increase during the process based on how we develop our budget for tax clash, select tax collections and the collection rate that we use. Um, the building department, we had an increase in our building department permit fees. Again, something I've mentioned previously, but where we landed, we had budgeted building permit fees at 450,000 and we actually collected almost 1.3 million. So that was a huge, a huge increase compared to where we had budgeted. Under the finance department, you'll see that we did not meet budget by about $89,000. This is related to our investment income that we were struggling with throughout the year. We had budgeted about $400,000 in investment income and we only received about $60,000. However, in order to offset some of this, we had other line items that came in for some grant funding for a little over $200,000 that offset the investment income loss. And then over here, you'll see the variance compared to last year as a decrease of 1.3 million. That's just because at the end of last fiscal year, we had received a bond premium for an issuance that we did, that we did not receive in the current fiscal year. Um, moving down to the town clerks department, we had revenues in excess of budget of about 308,000. And as you know, the housing market continues to increase and grow. So that helped us related to our conveyance and recording fees. And then the last item I just wanted to touch on is down here under the Board of Education for $250,000. This was some unanticipated grant money from our ECS grant that we received based on the state formula. It did give us an increase in funding this year. Moving on to the expenditure side. Um, million of expenditures compared to our budget of 104 million. So we were under budget by a little over a million dollars or 99% of expenditures. As I go through here, you can see that there are a few line items that stick out, but there's really nothing, anything super huge or anything major, with the exception of probably the police department. That was, that was incredibly astounding. So the smaller variances are made up of a few basic things. We had position vacancies in a lot of different departments. Department, the assessor's office, obviously the police department, we're seeing that. Dispatch, the senior center, library. So various departments had vacancies throughout the year that led to the savings. We also have an unsettled union contract with CSBA. So all of the increases that we built into the budget for this year, we have to put off until next year when that contract is closed. Um, another thing is due to COVID. So some of our buildings were closed for part of the year. Some activities didn't happen. You'll see under the, where is it? Under the health and welfare, you'll see transportation services because social services wasn't running their transportation all year. Things of that nature, we were able to gain some savings from those line items. Conferences, education, things of that nature that didn't happen as per usual. And then the last thing is just under our employee benefits of 178,000. Obviously we saw those benefits with the social security, health insurance, things of that nature related to and the, the contract negotiations that are outstanding. We saw those savings and related to our benefits. So that is where we are on the general fund. Moving on to our Parks and Recreation Fund. So we ended the year and it's funded with a surplus of about $140,000. Um, it continued the same theme as discussed earlier in the year. You can see that our recreation programs, the complex actually had revenue decreases compared to the same time last year, obviously due to COVID. But our golf course did incredibly well with about $226,000 increase compared to the same time last year. And also you can see that their revenues came in in excess of budget. And then in accordance with that, you will see that the, the complex, as well as the special programs, since we had a decrease in programs, we also had a decrease in expenditures. While the golf course was pretty consistent in their budget compared to their budgeted expenditures compared to their actual. So some good news there. And then the last fund I'd just like to highlight for you all is our Health Insurance Fund. A few things here. So we ended with another surplus at the end of this year of about $680,000, which brought our fund balance up to 4.4 million. And then that combined with our IBNR liability, we are at a total reserve of about 5.3 million. And this is 36% of expected claims. And as I always remind you, every quarter, we should be at 20 to 25% of expected claims. So this is a really good position to be in while we're going into the next budget season. I just wanted to share with you the main reason for that. And that is right here in our claim section, we budgeted 14 million. We ended up with an actual about 13 million, so about a million dollars under budget. And then I just wanted to share with you here, this looks a little funky. Our premiums are actually not under budgeted by 761,000. Our budget was actually, our actuals were pretty in line with budget. But at the end of the year, our, our consultants in Signet give us our IBNR liability. And that changed from 649,000 to 932,000. So that did impact our actual numbers in our premium section. So that's where the offset is when we change that adjustment. So I just wanted to point that out, that we are not that far off of budget. It was just an adjustment at the end of the year that caused that. That's all I have for highlights. If anybody has any questions before we move on to transfers.
I have one question, which you may not have handy, then I can look up. Do you know what our 2022, what number we had for expenditures for our budget?
2022? I think it was 105 million in total. Actually look it up.
And really just for the town portion, just to see the change from 2021 actuals and budgeted.
So the town portion was just shy of 25 million. And then if we add in our debt service and our capital to that, it was about 31,500,000.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Other questions before we move on to transfers? Okay, why don't we, why don't we look, take a look at the list of transfers? Any, is there any context you wanted to share before we jump into it?
Maria wanted to take this baby and kind of leave things off on a high level.
Great. Thanks, Amy. And thanks for the overview previously. So, you know, I think as we move forward, working through the potential transfers, it's to sort of think about them in three categories. You know, one is operating. So those are items that either were flagged during the budget process that you asked just to hold off on funding or items that popped up after the budget process happened, including some potential items that came out of things like my goal setting and, and my performance evaluation, again, some ideas that came out of those processes which were post-budget. So the smallest sort of category of the three categories are those potential operating transfers. There's a second category in here, which is capital. So we took a look at our, you know, budgeted capital and CNR plans for the next six years. And you really kind of took a look at, are there some potential capital items that we would benefit from? You know, moving, moving up in the process again. So all of the capital items are planned items and out here. Some of them, you know, were requests for the current year, but again, we pushed them out because we didn't have the cash available at the time. So we'll definitely walk you through those capital items. And then the third category are really our transfers to other funds. So those are things like our fund balance. And as you know, most recently, the Board of Finance had targeted us for around 15 and a half percent was a number that they felt really comfortable with. So again, maintaining our, our fund balance in a healthy position. As Amy mentioned, you know, it's important for us to set aside funds and an assigned fund balance for those unsettled contracts. So when they do, when they do settle, that we have funds tucked away for that as well as the capital reserve transfer as a potential source. You may recall that, you know, bond rating agencies are comfortable with us setting aside funds in the capital reserve and then using that to make capital purchases. What they do discourage is us using funds and fund balance to pay for operating expenses or for mill rate relief. But again, capital reserve is a very good place to set aside money for future purchases for capital. So I think that's just kind of a good, high-level overview. And Eric, if you're comfortable, do you want us just to go ahead and maybe take it line by line? And any questions the board members may have?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. And then perhaps in one of the columns to the right, we could, you know, take a note if it's something that we feel comfortable moving forward with tonight. If it's something that we wanted to, you know, pick up the discussion during budget season or something else.
Perfect.
So let's begin with a promise to Jordan. I know that this particular item was one that we had discussed as a, a possible outside agency funding request during the budget cycle. And Mike had suggested that perhaps we do it as a year-end transfer, which is why it's here tonight. Was there anything that you wanted to add on this, Maria?
That was a great overview, Eric. Thank you.
All right. Anyone have any questions on this item? Based on our, oh, yeah, sure, Jackie.
If, if we could just go through the items and then, you know, maybe have a discussion after, I think that would be great.
Sure. Yeah, I also, I think if we, you know, capture any questions or thoughts here, this also doesn't commit us to anything because then we could look at it holistically at the end. But if there's no other questions on a promise to Jordan, I guess the only other thing I would add is that I would be supportive of moving forward with this request tonight because the, you know, our, our intent was to bring it up at this time of the year all along.
Yeah, I, I agree with that as well, Eric.
Yeah, I do too.
I do too.
Okay. Maria, what context did you want to add on line 10? Uh Maria, what context um did you want to add on line ten?
Sure, I'll let Amy uh take this. This is the MUNIS implementation. So you may recall, we've been working on and implementing a new financial management software system that will also include the human resources module. Um and that is a joint Board of Education Town of Simsbury project. Um we did experience some pandemic delays um due to um, you know, the contractor having some issues with the pandemic. We had some issues with the pandemic, um but Amy could could take this one for you.
Um so as Maria stated, we had started our MUNIS conversion, and then unfortunately, the pandemic happened. And we pushed, it got pushed off um or delayed for part of the time. Um our implementers were originally coming out to train. And then we had to switch over to virtual, um and then they were supposed to be on-site to train us. We ended up having to do our own training. So our financial goal ID, I think, was originally supposed to be um January of this year. We had to push it off till May. And then um we are go live with the financial section of our of our system now, which is great. Um but we're still implementing the HR and payroll side of our system. So that's taking a little bit longer, and our go-live date for that will be the end of December. So in order to um meet that timeline, we're still doing payroll on our old system. So there's a small cost associated with keeping our old system software, so that we can run pay it payroll and then finish our um our conversion into MUNIS. So, but the major part of this line item, which I'm super excited about, as you know, my um Assistant Finance Director retired at the beginning of October. And she actually has her own um accounting consulting business on the side. And she actually offered um to take on and finish up the MUNIS conversion for us um through the end of December. So she would work exclusively on that. It would come off of um our plate, which would be very time-consuming. Um so I'm personally in favor of that. Um and it would give us time to get our new Deputy Dy- Finance Director up to speed without having to worry about the conversion and doing some of the the building of the bones of the system. Um so this is something I would really like to take advantage of, since she's willing to offer help. And um not only is she willing to offer on the town side, but she's willing to offer on the Board of Education side as well.
Thanks, Amy. Does anyone have questions on this item?
I have a question, Amy. So what happens um if you, you know, it's not paid for now? Again, some some, you're loo- you're gonna lose a resource, or we're just gonna pay for it next year out of the budget to repay for the the fee that was associated with running this for another cycle?
The Assistant Finance Director or the software associate?
The software. I I I thought there was, um we had to carry the old system and pay a maintenance fee for it.
Yeah, so that's a smaller part of the cost, but um so honestly, nothing really happens. Um we still are able to utilize the software, but if we have an issue with the software, they will not provide it for. So if the system blows up and we can't get payroll out and we call them, they say, "Too bad, you didn't pay your fee, and we're not helping you." So we can still utilize the system, but like I said, if something goes wrong, we don't get to utilize um the services for them to fix the system.
Okay, and then you're saying the resource may not be available, or you'd have the resource next year to work on it? Is is, you said there's a person to to take the data off of this system to move it to the new system?
Well, she's not taking the data off, but she she's like, so when we convert to MUNIS and we set up the payroll system, we're doing everything from scratch. So we're loading all of the positions, we're loading all of the employees, we're loading the tax tables. I mean, everything is done manually, and she's been the point person on this task since it started on the payroll and HR side. And she really enjoys the work, and she's willing to take that through to the end of the year.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions on this item?
So this is, just so I understand, this is new, just because obviously Deb retired, we're still in the conversion phase, that it's an opportunity um to utilize some expertise for, again, if there's money involved, but uh oppor- opportunity to utilize expertise that we have that's going out the door to position, Amy, your department to continue to focus on the finances of the town, not the conversion of the new software.
Exactly.
Is really the business, is the business case here. So we don't have to do this, but we run the risk of either A, not doing financial projects, or B, having the implementation take longer, and we can certainly do that. Um it's not the end of the world if that happens, um but there is, there is some some risk associated with it. But we have the opportunity with the skilled resource to basically run the finances of the town and get the conversion by the end of the year. Okay.
Okay. Um why don't we uh move on to the executive coaching um phase one and two? Maria, is that one you wanted to provide?
Yeah, I'd love to, thank you. So actually, this is um an idea I had following, um again, the goal-setting process for myself um that occurred with you all the summer, as well as my recent um performance review. And just really appreciated the board's um support and desire for me to continue to make professional development for staff a priority and to keep trying to drive that further down into the organization. Um and we've had such great success um with executive coaching for our department head team. After our conversations, I thought, gosh, it would be wonderful to be able to start extending that to our division head team. Um so that would be executive coaching on phase uh phase one dollars, if you guys were uh willing to support that. And along that same line of thought, I'm sort of a phase two for some of the department heads who have engaged in coaching. Um there's another um piece of it that we could, again, if we wanted to take that further around emotional intelligence and some things of that nature. So um again, this is one I was a bit excited about after, you know, we we spoke about, again, my goal setting and and again, your support for professional professional development for staff.
Any, yeah, any questions or comments on this one? Okay, Maria, I know that professional development uh uh for this in our time here, and and it's something that our board has um invested in um, you know, through the budget process. Um why don't you um uh provide context to the next one, line thirteen, the library medical uh leave of absence?
Sure, so this was something we became aware of um at the beginning of the summer, so post-post budget. Um we do have um a staff member um that will require a leave of absence. Um it's a position um that has very uh heavy counter functions, or or checkout, if you will, check, you know, checking books out. It's not a position that has back office functions. Um so again, those are hours that we need to fill. Um this staff member is eligible for a paid uh F M L time. Um so in order to backfill the hours, that's an unanticipated expense. And just, you know, unfortunately, you know, sometimes medical issues, they pop up and we don't have a lot of notice. And again, this one, I believe we first uh became aware of it in June.
So Maria.
Other questions on this item?
Yeah, so ju- so let's say we didn't have, we didn't, how, without this being considered under these year-end savings, how would that issue have been addressed?
You know, I I I get nervous about just authorizing people to overspend. I'm not generally comfortable with that. Um you know, it it probably would have involved if we don't, you know, sort of take care of this, so. I probably, uh if it had happened, say at a later point, um would have asked for a supplemental appropriation um to cover, you know, the potential backfilling. Um or, you know, worst, worst-case scenario is if we didn't have enough um staff hours to actually cover the desk rate, maybe having to shorten up some, you know, potential hours of operation for the library. Those are some of the kinds of decisions that we would have to make if we didn't have funds available.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other question? Okay, I know the next item, um the temporary staffing uh for a building official as well. Previously at a Board of Finance meeting, um and is there anything you wanted to add or any questions on this item? I know it's something that this board has been supportive of. Okay, what about the um, the diversity, equity, and inclusion uh work?
Sure, thanks, Eric. Um so these next two items, um the uh D E I uh training for staff and then potentially some of our boards and commissions, as well as um the policy and ordinance review that you all were interested in and having us take a look at at a staff level. Um again, these were some ideas and concepts that came out of our, you know, goal-setting session, again, for my myself where I know that it was a priority for you all to have us try and focus some energy in these areas. Um I do think we're gonna have any opportunity. I had reached out to CROG. Um they are going to engage in a regional RFQ um for these services. So again, that's really, I think, just a great opportunity for us to potentially tap into a regional bid for some of those professional services. Um but again, this really came out of some of, you know, the ideas and 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 areas of work that you all were interested in and potentially having us work on. Um the policy and ordinance review, um you know, we did do some initial staff research and tried to see if we might be able to tackle that without outside resources, and we're just finding it to be really difficult. Finding it really difficult to find models for communities our size. Um the communities we did seem to find through our research all tended to be very large cities um who had, you know, standalone offices um doing this very, very good work. And um again, so I think in this regard, we would definitely need a consultant's help to help us uh with both initiatives.
Maria, if we didn't uh approve the funding for the uh the D E I training now, would we miss out on the bid? It does not be something that we do as part of the the regular budget process?
Yeah, so not necessarily. Um they're just uh getting ready to issue the RFQ hopefully uh in the coming weeks. And then there will of course be, you know, a review period. Um usually vendors will hold pricing, you know, for some period of time. You know, I really honestly wouldn't expect us to probably begin this work until sometime in the new calendar year. Um the one advantage to setting aside the funds now is that because this would be considered an operating expense. If we did it as part of the budgeting process for next year, and this was an approved July one, twenty twenty two expense, that would go against the mill rate as opposed to um, you know, us being able to just use year-end savings to pay for that now.
I imagine other municipalities are gonna, same problem we do, is that it has to come off budget, because no one's doing their budget right now, right?
Right.
So it it's kind of a bad time for CROG to go out to bid on something if we're all gonna participate.
Yeah, some communities, I know, for example, one of our neighbors um anticipated that they might have an interest in doing D E I work but hadn't really, you know, determined to scope, and they had set aside around fifty thousand dollars. That wasn't, you know, specifically earmarked for a particular project. So I think some communities may have tucked aside some money, others, you know, may not have tucked aside some money. So I think it's a little, you know, it just depends. Yeah.
Yeah, this one, I feel like, I mean, I don't feel like there's a time pressure, and I feel like we need to rank that against all the other capital projects we have out there. It's certainly important work, but when is it important work? You know?
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think the challenge though is that, that we've said that, you know, you know, the work of the Spirit Council Diversity Equity Inclusion is a priority for this board, and this is an opportunity of doing it without it directly impacting the mill rate.
Yeah, no, I mean, this is, this is what year-end transfers are for, right? I just, I wanna make sure. No, go ahead, Chris.
I I ki- I kind of disagree though, Eric, in the sense that while we certainly have it as a, we have it as a as a priority for us. Um I think that is if this is, if this is something that is in total um for the elevation of services in town, because it's both, it's experiential, it's developmental, it's experiential as well. And it's something that possibly should be part of our operations, that it should be funded as as such. It should be something that should be taken up, considered, should be taken um potentially under um in 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 fed by and funded by um revenues through the mill rate.
I mean, we're gonna get in, I mean, we're 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 gonna get in very quickly here to the theoretical discussion of how do you use year-end savings, right?
Yep.
And traditionally, as long as I've been around both on this earth and on this board, the Board of Finance has allowed for some level of of capital expenditure a- as part of this traditional process, with the understanding that we don't make up things out of thin air. And and I don't think we're doing that here, and I think we're we're vetting them in our uh properly, right? But in that that annual ex- expedition that we do of prioritizing capital for this community, and not everything fits in the budget that that we think we ought to do, and this provides another opportunity. In the past, we used to kind of do them together at the end of the budget, the, you know, we we would deal with a line item, et cetera. This is, we've moved it out a little bit, but regardless, it's an opportunity for us to continue to fund the capital needs of the town. The other option is we can just keep building reserves, but, you know, Chris, then we've got a philosophical decision to make of, you know, are we gonna continue to build reserves, which one could argue is overtaxing at some point, right? Because what are we building reserves for? Um so it's 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 a challenge of what the what the right balance is, when do you stop building reserves? And when do you put that capital to use for the benefit of the taxpayers, which then offsets a future tax increase, if you're holding true to your priorities? So it's a, it's a constant balance of of of, I think, what we've been doing, which is is deciding the prioritization of our capital expenditures.
Yeah, I I I agree, and I think that I I agree with what you initially said, which is that we generally use these for capital.
Yeah.
Capital expenditures. What I see here is a list that is, that has a multitude of incredibly value valuable asks, but to me, it is, it is of a scope that is far broader than we've seen, at least in my tenure, relative to um projects versus capital. Um and initiatives, I will say, instead of capital. So that's that's as where where I I'm having trouble with this.
Yeah, no, it it's fair, and we have the debate every couple of years with with folks on, are are studies capital or not? I view them as capital, because they're technically one-time items. But then you can make the argument, we ought to put a couple hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget for studies to be determined, because we always have studies. Right? So.
Yeah, but I I but I'll give you, I I I look at D E I as something that should be baked into um our cul- our culture, and should be operational, and should be budgeted, and should be ongoing and annual versus a one-time. This, these are all one-time events to me, which is what historically we look at, and that's why I don't like looking at it that way. So I'll just, oh, I I don't wanna stop the.
No, no, you're bringing up all the right stuff, man. This is, this is what we gotta talk about.
I don't want to stop the conversations. I wanna eat dinner tonight, too.
Your priorities are in the right place.
And I'm stuck in my office.
Is there um any any other conversation on this particular item before we go on? All right, um the um Doing Business in Simsbury Guide.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. So again, this is another um idea that sort of came, came to me following, um again, my goal-setting, you know, process um for this uh this year over the summer, um and sort of, again, right, your desire for us to be taking, you know, sort of a proactive approach to development. Um this is something that Mike Glidden and I at some point um would really love to tackle. If we don't, you know, tackle it here this evening, definitely, um during the upcoming budget process, we'll certainly bring this back to you. Uh but we currently have a Doing Business in Simsbury Guide. It's incredibly dated at this point, but we'd really love to do a complete and comprehensive um update to that, a redesign, include additional information, and have both a digital version as well as some print materials available. Um and also, um this also sort of came out of the E D C preparing uh its annual report to you all, which will be happening at your next meeting. And so um they have either substantially completed or completed um three of their major projects that were on their work plan. So I know that they'll also be looking to you all for um some new projects and some new things that you would like them to work on um for their new period uh which would be, um you may recall that you all just need to adopt a a plan for them by November thirtieth each year. So this would be essentially their work from December to November for the upcoming year. Um so again, that's why we thought of it sort of post-budget as part of those processes.
Other questions on this item?
Is this different than the marketing material refresh we just paid for?
Um the life safety analysis.
Hold on, Eric, you there?
I think you froze.
Yeah, Eric, you still there, buddy?
Yeah, I broke up.
Yeah, so this is different than the marketing material?
It is, it is, yeah.
And it.
I can hear you.
Okay. Eric's like thirty seconds behind us, Maria.
Yeah. It's like a delay.
So I I just, I I just Googled the uh Doing Business in Simsbury Guide, just to see it. I I know I had seen it before, but it's mostly a bunch of links. Um, right, so it's fairly web-based, not printed. And it was, it says it was done in twenty twenty, so you would just be looking to re-haul the whole thing?
Yes, very much so, yeah.
Okay.
Are we gonna get more than a bunch of links for fifteen grand?
So what is, so five years ago, five years ago, we had, we, we were asked to fund, what was it? The the visitor-centered materials or the Chamber of Commerce materials? And then last year, we were, what was the one we funded last year? We asked to fund last year, Sean?
That was the marketing refresh that Sarah was running.
Now, now, now these are, now it's this guide, okay? So how many period, how many like printed, you know, conventional printed collateral information do we put out, do we have even have out there across the entire town that that we have a liability for? I mean, it'd be TV, again, it's, this is not about the value of the guide, it's. It's the phenomenon of ongoing unforeseen unintended liabilities that we create for ourselves, it seems.
Yeah, Chris, no, that's, that's a great point. So we have the Doing Business in Simsbury Guide. You know, Melissa and I had reviewed this, potentially partnering maybe with the Chamber on this particular project. And I think it would be good for us to really try and refresh that document once every two years. You know, go ahead and just do a really good, get a comprehensive, look at that now, and then once every two years. Another tool that, you know, I, I know that Mike Glidden feels very strongly about, that I think would add value as well. Is in addition to doing business in Simsbury, having a very good development guide in terms of permitting process. So that's a very tricky process. And that's something we don't have, that we think would be very important to have. And so an idea we had is, okay, you know, again, similarly, that should be updated if we go down that road once every, you know, two years. And that we would essentially alternate years that we were doing those updates. And that way there would be a constant sort of, you know, steady amount in the budget process. So that will be a proposal we'll be bringing forward during budget. There's another piece. Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess what I get is, are we actually, to Wendy's point, I mean, are we actually? Creating and printing like trifold materials, you know, this, this is to me, is just not. You know, whether it's the visitors, the chamber, the marketing, the business development. I mean, that's what I'm fearful of versus putting this in a format that is, that is Ian web-based. Not that there's not cost of, of updating that, but I hope we're not. Doing something because we've started something and then we need to redo it in that same manner. You know, we just started that.
Hey, Chris, can I jump in here? So to, to add to Wendy's point with this document does have a lot of links. Because it's a business coming into Simsbury that does not know what the code is. They, they want to put up a new sign. So I completely agree with you. This is right now more of a web-based, this is a document that can be emailed to a brand-new business. I would disagree with the printing of it. It doesn't make sense because of all the links to the codes and ordinances. And I would also say if it does need to be refreshed, that we would go right back to the people that wrote it the first time, which would be Mike Glidden. Sarah Nielsen with, you know, Simsbury Main Street, Lisa Hevner and the library. So we could go back to them, you know, basically for no cost and ask them to update anything that needs to be updated.
This should actually just be like a webpage, like a website instead of a printed document. But that would, we'd need a designer for that, so we'll go there.
I think we lost Eric.
Can folks hear me?
Okay, hi.
We can now. I'm, I'm back, hopefully for good. Okay. Is there further conversation on this item?
No, there's not a lot of love for this item, Eric.
I'm hearing that. I'm hearing that. All right, we've got a couple of items concerning the, the Performing Arts Center in the area. Let's jump to the life safety analysis next.
Great, thanks. Again, this was something that came up post-budget, particularly over the summer. As we were preparing for the very large-scale concert that we had at the Performing Arts Center this past August. And this was something that our public safety officials in particular felt very strongly about that. You know, that we would very much benefit from our venue, having the life safety analysis completed. It is something that's very common at large venues of this nature. And so in preparation for the estimate, our fire marshal, the fire district was very kind and obtained some estimates for us. Our building official also reviewed a potential scope of services. And felt that the various quotes we received, which was around $15,000, would be very fair and reasonable for that work.
Other questions from Maria?
I just think I need to get into more of the details on that one because it, that feels like an awful lot of money for them to tell us that 6,500 people should be the max that you have down there. You know, it's just, I'm, 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 I don't, I don't appreciate the value of what we being asked for. Because it's like, you know, we need two ambulances, we need 20 officers. You know, I mean, we've been doing that for 20 years down there. Are we going to get some life-changing information? You know, I, I get that it's important, but I, I think we're really trying to figure out what's the cap on the facility, right? And what should we not go beyond from a life safety standpoint? And again, 15,000 bucks feels like an astronomical waste of money to, to say it's 6,500 people. Or 7,500 people or whatever it is. And I, I'm, I'm best, I'm not, I'm not appreciating the full scope of it, Maria, but you know, I mean, it's just. And when just, I, I, I get, I, I 100% agree with the need to always prioritize life safety and to make sure that we're being thoughtful with it. But I'm, I'm not appreciating the details we're going to get out of it for that money.
Yeah, and if you, well, I could just quickly screen share sort of the high-level, you know, type of. Information that we would get from that, if that's helpful, if you want to do that this evening, if you don't want to, we can do that another time.
Would that be helpful to do, Sean? I mean, I.
I think I'd vote for another time.
Yeah, I mean, then it's a question of do we have to do it now off-budget or we do it part of the budget?
I think that, that, I would say the benefit of doing it now is that we would then have the results by the next, you know, pack season.
And we implement those changes? I mean, we're bound by a contract, right?
Uh, well, yes, but I think that some of these things, again, I mean, it's really about, right, like planning proper means of egress. Capacity sizes, having proper plans for various, you know, various events and threats. So it's again, a pretty comprehensive document, it's really, I think, a pretty valuable planning tool. But I don't believe we have capacity limitations in the contract between us and the Performing Arts Center. I, I, I'll double check, but I don't think that we do.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I just want to understand. So a- again, I think it's important, but if we can't implement a lot of it because of costs that the PAC would have to bear. Until we renegotiated a contract, I don't feel like there's a time sensitivity to it. If we're going to start using it in May and the contract doesn't borrow us from that, then perhaps there is more time sensitivity.
That might be a good reason to push it off till we have those, that information.
I don't know if the, you know, the chief is on the meeting this evening. I don't know if he has anything he'd like to add. And I'll email the document to you all too, just so you have, you know, a sample scope of services of, you know, the extent of what that would cover, just so you have that information.
Chief's like, I do not want to get in the middle of this right now.
And again, if you don't want to add anything this evening, please don't, don't.
No, no, I know. I, I don't, I don't mind. And I, you know, I think that, that sheet that you're referring to is, is very valuable. And may not be specific enough to our venue because it does talk about a lot of horizontal and vertical exits. Almost for a venue that has a structure. But basically, the, the analysis is kind of a holistic approach. You know, based on the learning experiences of other venues across the region that we haven't experienced yet. And I think, you know, as a, a town, we've done a great job like looking at evacuation plans. And emergency and capacities and ambulances and emergency personnel. But it's, it's, it may be, it may be limited because we're not taking advantage of, of all those other venues that have experienced other things. This also includes sort of what they're calling floor plans for. Different types of emergencies. So I think it's a benefit to look at. I'm not, I'm not sure if we, you know, we need to rush into it. I think maybe we can potentially get that, that, that price down based on that, but I think it's a very valuable thing for us to be looking at.
So Chief, I, I just have a question on that. So you, you look at it as a safety need for the PAC. If we do bring a big act, which I don't know if we know if they, we are, yeah, correct for next year, unless it's a secret.
Yeah, and, and not even for the larger acts, you know, for the, you know, for the several thousand capacity. Because it, you know, if you have. You know, a weather emergency, I think we've done a good job planning for that. But, you know, it may bring up more people on board. You know, and it may bring more credibility to the plans. Especially if we have an organization that comes in that were, or a. A group that comes in to use a facility who, who may not think that it's necessarily needed here. Because it's not the same venue as it is in Hartford or at the Oakdale. I mean, it may give, you know, some credibility to why we want to do certain things there. But it is, it is a life safety. Issue.
So one more question, like the timing of it, right? You know, we could do it with the budget next year, right? And then it would probably not be in, it wouldn't be in place for the next season, I, I would say. The, the only benefit I see for doing it sooner, right, would be to update the public gathering permit. Right? With the data that you guys find from this, to make sure that anybody applying for something covers all the. Life safety aspects that came out of this. Is that a true statement?
Yeah, I think, I think that is a true statement. I, you know, again, I'm not sure about the actual. Dollar amount, and I'm far from an expert on a life safety analysis. But it seems like the information that was provided may not quite fit our venue. And we may have some, some play in that. It may be a more desirable number or, or value on that. But I think it's definitely something that we, we should do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this item? All right. So I guess Chief, while we've got you, the next item is the lieutenant office space.
Maria, do you want me to start off on that or? Okay, yep. So, you know, obviously we did a, a command restructure. With a, a chief, a deputy chief and three lieutenants, and it's going very well. We are having though, some, you know, some restrictions and efficiencies because we do not have enough office space down here. In order to accommodate the deputy chief's position, we removed the. The large meeting area or conference room that we had, that we use for many, many things. So now we don't have that. That's where the deputy chief is residing now. Adding additional lieutenant, we don't have a location for that lieutenant. Right now, the lieutenant is in the detective sergeant office, which we have not assigned anybody to that position right now. And we're just sort of managing with what we have. So we're not, we haven't fully gotten able, fully been able to get to where we want to. With the divisional oversight, those lieutenants. We have some current space right now in our, our records area that used to be occupied. By a part-time police clerk, which that position has been by the wayside since 2015. And just thinking about where we could put somebody, you know, we did a large sort of analysis of this. And it was about a $250,000 project. And so we put that in the, the, the plans for, you know, basically year two and three out from here. And then we looked at, well, how can we make things much more efficient and much more sooner? And also, you know, maintain what we need to down here. And we looked at the space in the records and for about 25,000, we can. Basically make one existing area converted into a room and use it for one of the lieutenants. I think it's very, really important to have all of our positions, our supervisor positions filled. I think it's important for us to have some efficiency in that divisional oversight. So each of those lieutenants is responsible for many people in several functions. They need private meeting space to meet one-on-one, for coaching, for mentoring, for counseling, for discussions of cases. They need to meet with. The public, they need to meet with their coworkers, they need to have phone conversations. So I think we found a space that will work for us. Not a very long term, but it's also not a. It's going to be a space that can be used in the future for office space as well. If for some reason we don't need that anymore, or we relocate or whatever may happen.
Thanks, Chief. Are there questions on this item?
Chief, all three, all three lieutenants are working at the same time generally?
They are all three lieutenants work during the day. They each have very different functions. We currently have two lieutenants. In one sort of section and then right outside of their office is a. Sort of a common space area where we have our accreditation person. But it's, you know, there, there are doors at least there. But yes, they do all work at the same time.
Yeah. It's just interesting because in, in, at least the corporate America I experienced, we're actually going the other way where people are losing office space. And even the seniorest of executives are actually going to hotel cubes where everybody's equal from a space standpoint. And there are huddle rooms that if you need to have those confidential conversations. And I dislike it and have disliked it, but it has worked. So it's, it's interesting.
Just real, real brief, we do have, you know, our sergeants, we have six sergeants that share one office area. And so there are really small cubicles and there's, there's really very little room for, for any bit of privacy. Our officers, they all share a patrol room. So there are three stations where all of them share. And, and clearly they're not all there at the same time. There's two to three, sort of at the most. We have several other office spaces where multiple people share. We have two SROs. And animal control and our community services office all sharing a, a kind of a small, really small room. So we do have a lot of shared spaces. I don't know, and I can't compare it to the, the private sector. I do know that a lot of our work at, you know, sort of the command staff level. Does require quite a bit of private space during the workday.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, just one. So Chief, the reorganization is in our capital plan. For next year, is that right?
It is in the capital plan for half of it for 22, 23, and the other half for 23, 24. And so this is, you know. This, this will, this will probably be a much, you know. Much less. I, I guess, efficiency doing, doing this, but it, it gets us where, to where we need to be for now. So the renovations that we were looking at in years two and three from, from now or next year and the year after. Were significantly different than this. We were trying to gain back a little bit of, of conference space. In the office area that is shared by me, the deputy chief and the administrative assistant. And that required some walls coming down and some squishing up some offices. We would all lose quite a bit of space to gain a, a table. You know, I think that this is going to get us through for a few years. So it's, it's definitely not a replacement. We didn't go from a $250,000 project down to a $25,000 project. It's a, it's a very different project.
Right. And it seems like a temporary.
Chief, so the, if I, again, I don't, I don't have enough information. You know, you, you've provided a good deal of narrative, so, you know, to this point. But if it's temporary, if I hear the issues are space, privacy. And. In the fact, you know, in an, in an ineffective, ineffective work environment, those are the primary concerns. And it's essentially temporary. Why aren't we looking for other, other space in the building? It's just a question, not a challenge, you know, and say why. So for example, for example, the, the clerk's office there. Or the first selectman's office there, which by and large goes completely unused for 87% of the day. And it could be secured, it's private, it can be confidential, you know, for, for a couple bucks. I can imagine we can secure that, but if it's just about desk access, you know. It's kind of, it's the concept I want you, I want us to think about, back to Sean's, you know, hot desking. That's the, that's the, that's the perspective that most corporations are moving to. So could that be an effective intermediate or interim solution before the bigger renovation or redesign?
Yeah, and a good, good question. And we've put a lot of. Yeah. And a good, good question. And we've put a lot of thought into that. So back in 2005, when we did a very large renovation to the police department and other parts of town hall, we had a decentralization of our offices for probably a good six to eight months. And it really led to fragmented days. So what's, what's really nice is, is, is when you're able to see, see people and know what's going on. We do a lot of moving around, you know, from office to office. And if we then start to separate, I, I think we start to lose some things. I want, you know, all of our lieutenants, our sergeants to have really a, a good sort of global awareness of what's happening within the police department. And once you start separating and moving those around, I believe you start to lose a lot of that. So it's a matter of, you know, I, I'm constantly bouncing around from office to office. And if you walk down the hallway, you see that same thing happening. Deputy chief, lieutenants, the sergeants, they're in different offices. So I think it would go sort of against the efficiency that we're looking for and sort of that, that group or team effort.
If I could just pipe in, I'm Jenna. Um, so I am the chair of the Simsbury Police Commission and we have come to this board for the last two years asking for this space. In fact, we were here in January specifically asking for this renovation. And to address Sean's concern about having a huddle room, we don't have anywhere for there to be a huddle room. Unfortunately, there's just not the space right now. And this board has put its faith in this new command structure. And so on behalf of the police commission, we're asking you all to approve the space to give these officers, these lieutenants, the area to do the job. Whether it's performance reviews for other officers, whether it's something to do with victims, right? There's a lot of privacy and just privacy concerns. And we're asking that you guys consider that in light that it's not an apples-to-apples comparison with corporate America or what you are seeing with the, the cube lands and similar spaces.
Jenna, your point is right, but I mean, we do have office space. It's a matter of how we use it. And, and I'm not suggesting we haven't looked at it, but it's, it's a challenge and there's ideal versus manageable versus untenable. And we're probably at the manageable realm here, right? Where we can, we can run a police department and we're, we're not compromising the community policing effort, but we do need to address this at some point, right?
I just don't want to kick the can down the curb another year and another year like we have with, you know, other requests. I just, I want it out there that we've been asking for this. It's not something out of the blue. So if there are end of year savings that can be used, we, we would respectfully request that you use it.
You know, and I hear you, not, not arguing that, I guess. So just to clarify though, the 25,000 for the short-term solution has been continually asked for? Or the, the larger renovation has? Cause I thought it was the renovation.
I've never heard of this before.
We did ask for a third office lieutenant in, when we met with you guys at the initial budget meeting. And there were different plans. And so at that point, it was just off the table. You all wouldn't discuss it at all. So we didn't get into the minutia of do we create a $25,000 office space by chopping up the records area? Or do we cut the two lieutenants offices and to make them three and take some from the chiefs? Like we didn't get into the weeds on that at that point, but there have been various different solutions to give all of the lieutenants an actual office space.
Yeah. And my, and forgive me, my understanding was that that was always part of the larger scale renovation downstairs, not a, not an interim request. So.
It was, there were both.
I have a question. I, I just want to comment on something I heard earlier. Didn't the police department have a lot of savings this year? Did, did, um, was that something Amy, you said? That they came in well under?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay. Just wanted to put that out there. The other question I have is at one point I thought this 25,000 would reduce the future C N R item, which we just heard probably not, right? Because it, you'd still do whatever the full renovation is when the time comes. But if it's on the books for next year, 2022, 2023 and 2024, it's gonna not, it's going to be a few years out before you see any results, it sounds like.
Yeah, I, if I may, I, I don't, I don't see us having to do that, that, that renovation next year and the year after with that 250,000 until we get some answers from Tech Talk, which we've been working with to try to figure out how to address the future needs. What's it going to look like for the police department needs in five years, in 10 years? It, and I, and they're working on that right now. So we need a space for a lieutenant. It's an existing space that we have. It's a matter of putting walls up and converting it to use as, as office space that provides a little bit of privacy. The other things, we're making do with those right now. We're, we're meeting in my office. So we're, we're jamming five people in here to, to have our weekly meetings. Oftentimes they are several times during the week. We're going to make do with, with that. We need an office space though for this lieutenant. The 250,000 was, was renovating a current space where two lieutenants and an accreditation officer share to make that space three lieutenants and accreditation officer. We will not need that if we do this $25,000 project for lieutenant. It doesn't address the need for a conference room, but I, I don't, I don't think that we're going to be really visiting the idea of making a conference room down the line. We're going to be addressing the larger needs of the police department in a five or 10-year plan.
Yeah, Chief and Jenna, I appreciate you, your context. I mean, I'll, I'll support this. I just, I anticipate that we're going to have some challenges with our friends at the next board. And that if, you know, on the capital plan, we have 25 here and, and again, it potentially looks like throwaway money. I, I hear that it's not, and then it's addressing an immediate need, but I think we've got some challenges here.
The beauty of this is that it's creating regular office space. It's not specialized to, you know, it's not a gun range or it's, it's an office. And so it does have versatility.
Yep. No, I, I, I hear you. Yeah. And it, it's not, it's not a, a forever sunk cost and that somebody can use that office. So.
So this has, so this is just so just the rest of the board knows where, this is like putting the needs of the police department aside. That this is where I have a problem with this process, this list. Because again, I think this is a CIP issue and it should be considered as such potentially as part of the broader, this is not. This is, this is why I found, I find most of the things in this list a challenge because I think we're, we're looking at this out of, out of context of where they should be really supported long-term as far as a broader budget process.
I agree, Chris.
It's not that there's value in this whatsoever. Not, every one of these is, I'm sure has some of the, some of the strongest arguments and cheerleaders there are. It has nothing to do with that. It's about, for me, it's about process.
Yeah. And that, I mean, that's why I called Amy yesterday and I wanted to see the entire CIP list of things that we didn't yet do. Because to me it's whatever was, you know, so let's say we paid for one through 10 in this current budget, right? So what's 11 through 25? Are these new to the 11 through 25 and where do they rank? And honestly, that's what we pay for in my mind here philosophically, to your frustration of that honors the prioritization process from the budget and here, because we should always be chipping away at the most important capital items and/or studies as we go through. And this feels like it would rank out pretty high. But again, I'm doing that off memory for what I think is on the list.
Yeah, I think Sean, you actually did a really nice kind of segue about the capital, about the capital piece. Exactly. So one of the things with the capital items that are on here, they're largely C N R items in terms of dollar value. And you may recall during the budgeting process, we had highlighted for you items that were budget requests of departments for current year, but based on available cash capacity. We had to defer and push out further into years two through six of our, of our C N R plan, just to make things work. So, you know, really kind of taking a look at that list, again, items that were planned, some of which we had hoped to do this year, but couldn't do. And really kind of took a look again at items that were planned that we could potentially pay for in cash now because of, you know, some, some urgent needs. And as we get further in the list, for examples, we had unfortunately a signboard that died last month. So that's just sort of an example of an item that we had hoped to do this year. It was flagged as an item we had to push out. It's now died and, and, you know, hopeful to, to replace it. But it's sort of a, a framework for the capital items that are coming up.
Okay. Why don't we continue with the Meadowwood project and legal savings?
Yeah, thanks, Eric. I thought that this might be a, a good use of savings. So we typically budget two pieces in legal or more general items that aren't labor or pension related. So we budget for the retainer, for our town attorney. And then we budget for litigation work that might come our way or special projects that they might have to do that are outside of our retainer. And we were very fortunate this year and that we didn't have a lot of litigation work or special project work. The one special project we had really for legal was Meadowwood and we do have an established capital project for that. You may recall that we did in our planning for what we thought for bond authorization, we had planned for some, you know, minor site improvements for some of the barns, stabilization, signage, some minor parking improvements, environmental review. So we did build in some, some costs associated with the acquisition. You know, I know there was one cost that we hadn't anticipated, which was the $10,000 appraisal that the board of finance had asked us to do. So again, this was just a thought, sort of a creative way of offsetting that unanticipated expense that we now have charging against the capital budget. And then using legal savings from the general fund for special projects for this particular project, which really was a special project, but it's a capital project. So that was just the thought there.
Other questions on the item? Okay. Maria, why don't you give a little context around the security camera project?
Sure. So again, this was unfortunately an emerging issue after our budget process. As you know, since late spring, we've been encountering some pretty significant vandalism at the Simsbury Meadows complex. Primarily the ban shell area, the rock wall that's near the ban shell and the Rotary Park playground area. Again, it's vandalism, it's extreme litter, but it has been damage that's very costly. We're now up to over $10,000 so far since the spring and damage that's been caused. And that's just the direct cost to replace and repair work that doesn't even include the staff time associated with it. You know, we've tried plea, pleading with folks through social media. We've tried, you know, sending police resources there when available. But they can't be there all, all the time, unfortunately. And so we were hoping to have some security cameras in place that might help deter the vandalism and the litter. And if it does occur, this, this particular pot of money would not only provide the security cameras, but the data storage as well. So we would be able for a 30-day period to be able to go in and look at the video in the event that we did have continued vandalism and, and damage at, at the Simsbury Meadows complex.
Thanks, Maria. Questions?
I just, I think this, this one, um, to me is a, is a good use of the funds prevent any additional vandalism, right? You've already said it's been $10,000 that we've had to spend to fix it. It's a safety issue, which is, you know, everyone's top priority. The parking lot even, you know, just to know what's going on there. So I, this is one that I could get around very easily.
Yeah, I agree with that, Wendy.
I agree. Just any operating impacts, Maria? Annual, annual spend that comes out of it?
Yeah, Melissa, I don't think that there were any additional costs beyond this, this price, correct?
I don't believe so. No, we currently do have the storage down there, but it's like a seven-day look back as opposed to the, to the 30 days. So I think, I don't think there would be any change other than, than that. We can confirm, but.
So just to clarify, we're paying 14 grand for 23 more days of look back or we're paying 14 grand for more cameras?
Oh, right. We're going to, one is a replace, piece of it is replacing a camera that's down there currently. And then a secondary piece is the, the data storage.
You know, we can buy a ring for like 300 bucks and you can get the, the 10 bucks a month service, right?
On.
Just saying.
A little more advanced than that.
I think it's a little fancier than that.
Is it? Is it really?
A command center with like a Homer Simpson in the screens.
Maria, Eric, just taking this, I want to take this topic a little outside of what we're, what we're considering here. And as you, you put public, you put some information out there in the camp, it's an appeal through social media. Have we looped in and had a conversation with Matt to, to put a campaign with the, the junior high and the high school? And why I say that is because I think that that's where some of the challenge is coming from. And I think that if, and I can say that from a little bit of personal experience, because I know that my kids who are junior high and now early high school, the, 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 the usage of downtown has really accelerated this past year, more, far more than it ever has in the, in the, in the, in the near past. So there's just more traffic and there's more junior high kids. And I can, I can say that definitively because those are my kids. I'm not just making some, I'm not some cranky old person making a claim. Okay. I've seen, I've hauled them out of there. And my kids, they, they know that they'll be tarred and feathered if they step, they step foot in Rotary Park. But what I would ask for is, I would ask there to be a message, a live message sent out via the high school and the junior high, an appeal campaign to the kids, because they're the, they're the best police we have. They will, they will be the stewards that we need them to be and the ones who will step up and, and it act as our eyes and ears. And they, they can be our strongest deterrents. And it's not necessarily about them being interfering with somebody. But it's about just reminding them about being the custodians and the stewards of our, of our town. I think that's what the messaging really should be. And it'll probably be, be a pretty, it's a, it's a low-cost investment that'll go a lot, lot further than cameras. Because we didn't have a problem before. We just have to remind people about where they should be or shouldn't be or how they, they should be using things. So that's kind of my plea to you. It's as part of the initiative here.
I, I agree with that. And the, the other piece though, Chris, is, is cameras aren't going to stop people from littering. And we're not going to go arrest a bunch of 13-year-olds for littering at Rotary Park either. So this is not necessarily going to stop the problem. It's going to give us a video, videotape of the 13-year-olds that do it. But as, as we deal with the, you know, the car thefts and everything else, nobody's going to jail for any of the thing they're doing down there. So unless there's an intervention from a parent or the community or somewhere else, this is not stopping because of cameras. We're just going to know the face of who does it.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. We can add to that by having an appeal campaign to the kids themselves directly, not to social media. Through a town website that nobody reads. If, if you, if the principals of those school put a P A announcement or make it, or draw together to assembly and say, hey, let's be, let's be stewards of the public spaces that we have in this town and let's help each other care for them and, and and it promote that message. I bet you it'll go a lot farther than the, the cameras will as deterrent. So that's just my appeal.
So are you, is, are, am I hearing though, that the, the camera and the security thing may not even be a deterrent? That it may not be necessary?
They're already, they're already there.
Hi. Maria, go ahead.
Yeah, we have one at the moment, but it is again, very dated technology. And so again, we would be, what we've assessed at that particular location is really there's a need for, for two. Again, that are more modern can give us a better picture as well as the increased storage.
And someone would go back and look at them, I guess, is the, like the videos that we have people that would do that? Is that would be the police department who would do that?
Yeah, it would be some combination of I T and the police department.
Yeah. I mean, and then we're going to go off the goal on Facebook or whatever and figure out who's 12-year-old it is. And again, I mean, I mean, again, but the likelihood of enforcement, again, I'm not the chief, he can speak to this, is, is slim to none here. Right? I mean, and this is, I, I'm fine for the hell, for the public safety side of it. But I, again, let's not forget the terrible thing that happened 50 feet from there, not too long ago, that's far beyond, you know, littering and vandalism as well. So I, I think there certainly is a need for these cameras and I do support them. But let's, let's not fool ourselves into thinking that because there's two cameras up, kids all of a sudden are going to change their behavior. There's cameras all over this town. I mean, every car that gets stolen, you can see the kids stealing the cars on the ring. They do not care. So two cameras from the town of Simsbury is not going to change behavior down there.
No, if I can just, I can just add, there are, there are more than one camera. There's, there's a few cameras down there now. They are older. They don't, they give you a grainy picture. What they do prevent is.
What they do prevent is from any kind of enforcement or making an example. You know, I know maybe somebody doesn't want to hear it, but we're, you know, it is fairly effective when we're able to hold somebody accountable for some of the damage that's done down there. Uh, maybe it only takes one time, you know, to make that example of, of somebody or, you know, they get that call, you know, the parents get that call and they talk to their kids and word gets out, hey, we're taking this, we're taking this more serious than we used to. I've been here since 1999 and this has been going on since the day those fields were built down there. Every early release date, every warm day in the spring and the fall, there are hundreds of kids down there. And the behavior has only gotten worse. We've tried to solve these problems in 2006, six down there to no avail. And only what, what we're getting now is more disrespect for authority, more disrespect for the facility itself. Um, like Chris is right. Certainly the, the school could be a great resource to us for this. We've made announcements to the school, to the schools made announcements before. Uh, I think the principals and Matt Curtis are both aware of some of the problems we've had there. Um, any help we could get would be, would certainly be beneficial. Um, what, you know, it's, it's a relatively small cost for these cameras that'll go a long way. Um, they're going to give us a 360 degree view from about the corner where Miss, where the, uh, performing arts center office is now all the way back to the barn and the playground and the entrance to the facility. For, so, you know, we would be able to get some license plates of cars coming in and out if that's the time of day, type of damage at night or, or that kind of thing. But it really would help us to, you know, I think if the community knows we're taking this seriously, I think it'll filter down to the kids in, in some way, shape or form. And, and thank you for letting me stand on my soapbox for a minute.
Right. All right.
Tom, I, I, yeah, I just wanted to jump in. Uh, I know for a fact that, uh, during COVID, this became a far bigger issue. Um, for a variety of reasons, and I am supported, supportive of putting more cameras down there to do what we can. But part of the other side of the coin is we have to start to hold people accountable for that to the best of our ability. And that is a challenge of it by itself. And that's a discussion for another day.
Thanks, Mike. For what it's worth, I agree. Uh, wood chipper, front loader.
Yeah, I can, I can tackle this one. Um, so again, this is just, I think, an opportunity, um, and a good, uh, good partnership, um, you know, with Parks and Public Works working together. Um, we did have in year six of the CNR plan, um, a loader for Parks budgeted. Um, however, after kind of, you know, looking at their needs and what they would be using the loader for, um, we could simply cycle down, um, the DPW loader to Park. Um, what we typically do when we have equipment that has value left in it is we'll factor in either a trade in value or value that we might get for that vehicle or piece of equipment at auction. We had estimated that at about $20,000. So, um, for the public works chipper. Um, uh, and, and loader, um, we had factored that in. But again, just again, looking at an opportunity to, to save a bit of money out in an out year. Um, and you know, parks could take that hand me down instead, um, and that would, uh, eliminate the need for a purchase in year six. So that was just the thought there as a possible, um, you know, cost savings opportunity for the future.
Want any questions? Okay. Uh, Maria, on the sidewalks, I think this is an interesting opportunity.
Yeah, I think so too. And I really want to thank Tom Roy again, just for sort of his creativity here. So typically, um, in any sidewalk work that we're doing, um, there are about, um, 10 to 20% of the costs of the sidewalk, um, construction actually do. If there's design work that has to go with any, any sidewalk work that we're doing. Um, and so our thought was, you know, over time, those design costs add up. It takes away from the dollars we're putting into, into the actual sidewalk construction. I mean, you may recall initially when we had our sidewalk analysis and ramp analysis completed, the recommendation was to try and do this at a pace of about $250,000 a year. Um, we ended up having to stretch out that work at the request of the board of finance, doing about $200,000 a year. So again, um, the thought being is again, since we had some, um, excess capacity and, and capital, um, we know what the original intent was of the board, which was to do 250 a year for sidewalks. Again, we thought this might be just again, sort of a, a new opportunity. Um, essentially replenish some of the sidewalk money for the design work that's associated with any of the, the sidewalk, sidewalk work that we're doing.
Thanks, Maria. Um, are there questions on this one? Okay, let's keep going.
Great. So material crushing. I'm just going to have Tom explain this. I feel like, I know we're probably getting into the weeds a little bit with material crushing. So, um, I, I will say I preface this, but by moving forward, this is an operation, um, that sometimes occurs as frequently as every two years. I think right in a long stretch, Tom, that might be once every four to five years. Um, and moving forward, um, what we've identified is that similar to revaluation, uh, we should just be budgeting an incremental amount, you know, every, every year for this purpose. So you may recall in the current budget, right, we started that process. We're going to set aside money every year for a five year period. Moving forward for materials crushing. That's not typically how we had handled that here previously. Um, when it was needed, it was either paid for through operating budget savings or through year end savings when the operation needed to happen. Um, and then I'll just turn it over to Tom to explain what, what materials crushing actually is.
I, I know. I don't thi, I don't think this, uh, sounds exciting at all, especially during such a long meeting. Um, but it's actually one of the better things we do in terms of making sure we do the right thing with our tax dollars. Um, as many of you have seen with our very aggressive paving program, um, and with the 10 miles or so that we pave every year, we have to replace the enormous number of catch basins alongside the road, which requires us to do about, um, significant amount of excavation. Everything that we dig up from there is a waste product. It's asphalt, it's rocks, it's stone, it's dirt, it's the actual concrete catch basin itself. And in some areas of the state, in some municipalities, they would take that and they would find a, um, vacant field, a site, an area that they don't care about, and they would dump it and it would just become random fill. Uh, what we do is we stockpile all of that, um, material and it becomes a very large pile. And as Maria said, every three years or so, we bring in a crusher that actually crushes that material down into what's called a processed aggregate. When we are done digging up the holes on, on these roadways, we have to put back material that will be compacted in a special way so that it can support the load of the roadways without settling. The material we crush is what we put in to all of the excavations and site work that we do. Um, and not only is this used by highway, this is actually used by parks and rec, it's used in almost all of the town's construction projects. We developed this product for about $5.50 a ton. If we had to buy the material, it would be in the range of $20 a ton. Plus we would have to pay to have it trucked to Sims Berry. So we're getting this for about a quarter of the cost and, and nobody could be more, more nerdy or excited about, about this type of thing than me. We're, we're taking a waste product and, and really doing a good thing in terms of utilizing tax dollars.
Thanks, Tom. Are there questions?
Um, I love this. In my 10 years, I've never heard of this.
And, and this is one of those things that we used to do. Again, things were very different how we handled year end. Yeah. We had an extra $30,000 in savings. We would have simply applied this. Um, we would have just contracted out for it, applied it. And then we also had material under the landfill in the past for the crushing. So that's the two places that we would pick it up. And like so many things that public works does, we just did it.
Yeah.
And, and in a way, you know, as, as much as this looks like a big number, it's, it's going to last us a number of years. Um, we got a really favorable price for it. And just, I told Maria, just this past week, we shared our numbers with one of the other Valley towns, because they're going to start doing the same process.
So when I look for on the line item that would have been inflated if we didn't do this, I would look at road and drainage supplies and material. Tom is where I, I would see. So if I translated this into expenditures, I'd put an extra 500,000 basically in that line item. Or 400,000 based on the $4 versus the $20 or $5 versus $20?
Exactly right.
Yeah. Okay. No, that, the math makes sense to me. It's just, so basically this is a, we're getting caught up and then Maria going forward, we're going to put this as just a, a regular item. Um, that's there unfunded because it makes a lot of sense. So it's a, it's a spend to save is what this is.
Exactly.
Yeah, it is.
We sell it?
We definitely. It, it's so funny, Chris, because in, in Sean has been around long enough.
Five bucks, five bucks to make and it's 20 bucks in the open market. Let's, let's, let's ding the, our neighbor's 15 bucks.
There. Well, Sean was here a couple of years ago and, uh, I sold $30,000 worth of sand. So.
One of the delinquents from the, uh, park and, uh, have them break some stones.
Hey, you're on juvenile review, Mike. You can set the punishment.
Oh. I tried, didn't like it.
Or we, or we could use the excess for Sean's burn.
Won't be, uh, that it's, it doesn't cost enough. It's got to be gold plated to be FEMA certified. You know that.
All right, I'm moving on. Uh, wayfinding signage.
Sure. So again, this is an item that had gotten pushed out in our CNR a couple of times. I know one year, um, you all had advanced it to the, to the board of finance level. I believe that was three budget cycles ago as an EDC work plan item. Um, while you were supportive of it, they were not, they did not fund it. Um, but I know that's a, a project that you all have carried forward in the CNR plan. And again, um, the EDC will be looking for some new projects. Um, so again, this was an item in the CNR plan, um, that we thought would be worthwhile of talking about if you wanted to bump it up in the CNR plan and possibly, uh, recommend funding that now.
This is buying the signs and putting them in?
Right. It's, you may recall, I think it was 20, and Tom Roy would probably be able to tell you the exact date. I think 2016 timeframe was the parking study and one of the recommendations for the parking study was the wayfinding signage around downtown and some discussion villages. So exactly, this would help us to procure the signs, get them installed, um, et cetera.
The other piece is I think we may want to have a small portion of that may go to a graphic artist just to make sure that we have a consistent look and that we're, we don't want highway looking signs. We want signs that really welcome people to downtown Sims Berry.
Yeah. Creates a little bit of a sense of place.
But just to be clear, I don't want this to go die in committee. We have the plan. We know what we need to put up. It's, it's going and executing them. So we're not going to go put them as a work plan item and have EDC then redo what's already been done, right? Cause it says possible EDC 21, 22 work plan item.
If we, if we wanted to go, the, the very first element of this, and this is one of those things where, um, and Sean, I know your feeling about studies and plans, but when we brought in the parking consultant experts, they, they did something that, that was hard for the rest of us to do, which is they looked at Sims Berry from people, at the perspective of somebody who's coming to visit.
Right.
And what the consultant said is, how do I know that the large parking lots are right there off of Iron Horse? And when you get there, how in the world is a visitor from outside of town who this person happened to live in a city, how do I know I can park there and how do I know it's free?
Right.
And for those of us that may be challenged with a sense of direction, how do you get from Iron Horse lots up to and spending your money at the coffee spot or Fitzgerald's or
Right.
any of the other shops? So this would be some blue parking piece along 10 to say, there's parking down here. And we would be working on inviting signage to say, park here in these commuter lots. And hopefully a location plan that would say, these are our primary businesses to go say.
Yeah. And we actually heard directly from some, uh, from some people who came from out of town and couldn't find the performing arts center after they parked in the commuter lots. Which sounds hard for us to believe, but I mean, it's not necessarily obvious.
Isn't there just, just, I, I believe Sarah Nielsen, isn't she kind of championing this effort at some sort and um, even talk, coming to talk to the ARPA work group about it? I, I did ask Maria if.
Is that, is that signage when?
Yeah, I thought, I thought so.
Is it wayfinding or is it the signage initiative? The, the business signage initiative?
I don't know. I thought there were a mutual signage initiative.
You know, this one we've been talking about for, we've been talking about this one for years.
This is one of Eric's, this is one of Eric's early, early ideas.
So there's two signage, there's three signage initiatives, the.
I, I believe that there's, I, I know that Sarah is championing a initiative, but looking for monies to support, um, upcycling, upgrading and modernizing a number of businesses signage.
That's, well, that's, I thought that was called the frontage, not the signage.
That's the facade. Yeah.
The facade. Thank you.
Program. Totally different, uh, Chris.
Right. Yeah, exactly. So I just don't, I don't remember you guys, I don't remember Sarah talking specifically about wayfinding signage though.
And so she met with, um, Tom Roy about this and we do have the parking study to use.
Yeah, I, okay.
Yeah. So as long as we're not going to do another study and we're going to do what we already have. And I mean, again, it, like Tom Roy, I mean, you and I found out and Eric, you know, and, and Chris and Mike, we didn't know that people didn't know you couldn't park on Route 10, right? In certain spots and it never happens, right? You, you, you can, right? And, you know, we've heard from local businesses, you know, and, and Main Street members that people continually complain that there's not enough parking. And, you know, I sit here and scratch my head and go, there are 5,000 parking spaces within a quarter mile of these businesses, but it's not viewed that way. So how do we help the businesses without spending $2 million on a monstrosity of a parking garage? Which, you know, was talked about years ago.
Yeah. Well, the, one more question I just want to throw out, which I threw out and I was, and it was thrown back at me was Maria. I asked Maria if there was a potential for ARPA usage for this and Amy's thought was no. And my only comment on the ARPA stuff is we're, right now we have the guidance. We don't think it's going to change that much, but it could change. And then there's lots of towns out there saying they're using their money for multiple things that we're saying it's not allowed for, which rightfully, it could be rightfully so. It's not allowed for. So if there's any chance that this could potentially end up being something that could get paid for, that's my only contingency is that we could potentially get, cover it with our $7.5 million.
I agree. Wendy, that would be a good use of the funds if it's allowed. And if not, we have a potential infrastructure bill. So that's two other avenues.
The infrastructure bill is not going to give us money at the local level to put up signs. I mean, and it's going to tax us at a mileage. Let's not talk about the infrastructure bill tonight.
But anyway, this is signage, something that.
We should rule it out.
Yeah, for tour, it could be, we, right, Jack, if we end up having an ability to use money for tourism, because our, our town was impacted, we could potentially get the 20, 20 grand. Is it 20 grand?
Amy, I mean, Amy, the, the, the ruling today though, is, is that we cannot use ARPA money for signs, right?
Right. So under the tourism, um, requirement that ARPA has right now, it's to assist business, businesses in helping to reopen, make them COVID safe. Um, things of that nature, um, improve like ventilation probably, um, but not for, um, unless we can prove that we lost tourism, um, during the pandemic, it's not for stuff like wayfinding signage now.
Would we be able to? Would we be able to run this by, um, Bob D to get his take on that?
He's not an expert on ARPA though.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't run it by him, but I could run it by, um, a gentleman over at CCM that is super close to the funds. He's done, um, a lot of trainings on the topic. And he actually had one at GFOA recently where the people were running by what they wanted to use the money on. He would say yea or nay. So I could reach out to him.
Thank you. Bring him to our meetings, like.
Yeah, you know, uh, I think that's a good use because I'm hearing we might inter, this is interpretive. So, and we know that the ARPA is, there's, it's interpretive up to your side. You're on your own volition to, to police yourself. And I'm hearing interpretation and a couple of different comments here. So I, I think there, one could make a case that this would promote the restoration of, of businesses, uh, from a challenging economic time with.
So I'm all for it, but we were told explicitly by the board of finance not to take any risk with the ARPA money. So.
Yeah, but we're, we're looking for someone else. None of us are, none of us are the authors of the document, Sean, and none of us are the ultimate arbiters. All we're, we're looking for, there's always going to be risk, right? So we're going to take the, we're going to seek in a, uh, uh, you know, seek, seek a position from somebody who is in a position though, with, of more knowledge than we are. And if they say, yes, this is something in my interpretation, that's all I need to hear.
Yep.
Because I'm not going to listen. Rob Pomeroy is not going to interpret it for me as the arbiter and, and Eric Wellman's not. It's going to be, that's, that's the risk we all take. So it's.
No, I, I agree with you and I'm not suggesting we don't, but if Amy's not comfortable signing off, it doesn't happen, I guess, is my benchmark. That's, that's how it works with this money. If Amy doesn't sign, it doesn't go.
Right.
And that's, that's how it works.
And, and I agree. And Amy's willing to, to, to seek out an outside resource, it sounds like. So that's, that's, that's what I hear.
And, and it's still, this whole thing is kind of still evolving. I mean, there's rules, but some people may be able to break the rules if you have the backup support. So.
Except in West Haven where the feds are coming in, but.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Yeah. So let's not, let's not get too excited to break the rules, but.
No, we're not. But we still, we can always pay for it next year, right? It's not going away.
It, it is. And again, this is just a, this is just a be in my bonnet that everybody screams, especially, and on this board about economic development. And we have a, we have a, an opportunity for a lot of low dollars for a study we already paid for to put signs in that a consultant already told us, we don't have a need to help improve wayfinding from the visitor vantage point of coming to the community. And again, we don't get a lot of opportunities to do much for economic development in this community that's real in terms of bringing people in. We do a lot of pamphlets and studies and other things, but this is something a consultant's already told us would move the needle. So.
So Sean, I'll just challenge you that this was in our 22, 23. So.
It was in our 18, 19 too, Jackie.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I'm willing to wait to get the guidance. For the ARPA funds as well.
And I guess my point is just, we need more than 20 grand for this, I believe, Tom, is there's more than 20 grand worth of signs we would want to put up.
I think 20 grand gets us to start, but there's certainly a, a, a lot more opportunities. Um, but at the same time, even, you know, assuming everybody decides that we are going to go forward with this, this wouldn't be. Ready to go until probably spring realistically. We're going to need a little time to make sure that we. Um, get the graphics right. And then we want to make sure that we, um. It, it's just going to take a little bit of planning because we don't have. Everything queued up on this one.
Yep. Okay. So we can wait for the guidance.
Okay. Next up, uh, the tennis court resurfacing. Sounds like we may have an opportunity to take advantage of, um. An offer from a current contractor.
Yeah, that's correct. And I'll probably have Tom Tibbersky elaborate a bit on this for us. But again, right, things like resurfacing, the tennis courts are typically items in our C and R plan. Um, and we have a contractor that was doing some work for us. Um, and made an error and as part of sort of making up for that error, had offered, um, to perform some additional work for us at cost. Um, and it is work that we would typically, um, typically do as part of our C and R plan. And Tom, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add or elaborate on that.
No, that's a, that's a pretty good explanation. We, uh, as you, as you know, we've had this pickleball thing going on for years and it came back to, to. To bite me when they painted the lines at the end of the summer, uh, the contractor made a mistake on two of the courts that he painted. Uh, that he had asked them to paint. And in order to correct that mistake. Um, the interior of the courts actually has to be repainted in line. You just can't blur it out. Um, all of our courts, you know, they're about five years old now. They were done with one top coat. At the time, the standard is two, um, so they are showing quite a bit of wear. So what? Uh, we have the opportunity to do for the, for the nineteen thousand requested is basically from everything inside the fence would be. Repainted, relined with two coats of high quality. Uh, sport coating and we, you know, we get basically new looking courts for the next seven to eight years. And we don't come back and ask for any. Any court money and our mistake gets, and the mistake that they made gets corrected. And he's doing that at cost. Um, the option is to go just to have the two courts that were affected, um. Cleaned up and that would look, you know, we'd have two new courts and two old courts and the complete exterior of the area would still look old. Um. So we, either way, we're going to be doing this work soon. We might as well do it at cost and, and get some savings out of it and move on.
So it saves us a little bit of money if we do it now rather than later.
Significant amount of money.
Okay.
This would be about a $35,000 or more job if we had to put it up to bid.
Okay.
And Tom, can I just, Tom, putting a mistake aside. When, we know we did one, the top coat, you're in one top, one coat, we're in year five. So when would you be asking for this normally, like most likely?
The standard use for, for. Um, when you do the two coats is what we're asking for. The standard use of that is going to get us eight to nine, maybe 10 years. Uh, those courts are in the sun the entire day, so they do probably wear a little quicker than, than others. Um, but yeah, we're probably going to be good, you know, let's, let's hope eight to nine years out.
Okay. I didn't, maybe, maybe I didn't ask my question correctly. So the current, current. Courts are only one coat and they're in year five of those coats. They've got to be almost trashed then I'm assuming based upon the timeline for two coat course.
Yep, that you're, you're correct. It was something I'm learning more about as, as I've gone on here.
So when would, when, when would these one coat, five year in. Courts be ready for their. Renovation or repainting normally?
We do, it, it, we would have to do this very soon. And we were probably going to have to do it out of. Like Maria said, either come back for a request or parks, parks and facilities maintenance money. It's. It's.
Okay, so you're asking. So you're asking, you'd be at next year, you'd be coming to us saying, hey, our courts need to be repainted because they're in year six of a one coating scenario.
Uh, yeah, in short, yeah, in short.
Okay.
What we would be.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yep.
All right. The variable message sign boards. Um, we know one of the two have been died recently. Obviously, um, they were old, but unexpected. Maria, what, what did you want to add on this item?
Sure. So again, these, um, were, uh, we have two, uh, that we currently use. Um, we had them budgeted in out years. We had shifted them out again, unfortunately, just, you know, because of all of our capital needs, um, this past year. Um, a neat, uh, piece of technology, uh, with the replacement boards that are available now is that they also, uh, detect speed as well. Um, but these boards do get a lot of heavy use. Um, we actually had a recent need, uh, for a spare one and the fire district was. Kind and, uh, they weren't using there. So we were able to at least borrow one, um, for our sort of immediate needs. Um, just one other piece that I would know and I'll see if the chief or Tom Roy have anything to add after this. Um, is that like many things right now, um, our equipment, materials, et cetera. Prices are coming back higher than when we quoted things out last year. You know, there's just shortages and again, materials, supplies, et cetera. We got an updated estimate that did come back to us today and it was slightly more than what was provided to us during budget. Um, so the cost had gone up from sixteen thousand apiece to I believe it was seventeen thousand. Two hundred and thirty-five dollars plus or minus a piece. So, um, the price has gone up slightly. Due to, again, material shortages and things of that nature.
Okay. Any questions on the message boards?
Just, my question is, could you just do one, the one that's to replace the broken one?
We, we could. Um, we know that both do need, you know, to be replaced, um, because they both were aging pieces of equipment. Um, so if we defer one, um, we would just most likely keep the one that's in the capital, you know, capital plan for year two of the C and R and, and need to make another purchase next year.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. Uh, so one of them is 14 years old and one of them is nine years old. Um, we've had, uh, some issues with them over the last several years, especially the one that's 14 years old. Um, water seems to get in, even though they're made for the outdoors. We've had repairs done on these. The expected, um, life use is like five to eight years. Um, so we've exceeded that on, on all these. There was no indication that one that broke in September was going to, was going to break on us. Um, we are regularly using these for all sorts of projects. In fact, this last summer, the highway department had two projects. Uh, that they use these signs at, uh, to protect their personnel working the roads. So I don't know how old the fire department sign is, but I think there is a need for us to have two very reliable signs as soon as possible. And as Maria had mentioned, the really unique aspect about these signs now is unlike the two that we have, they, they both do. Um, speeds and they will tell the driver what their speed is, just like, um, other signs that we have through town and they will. They will track the data and make that data available to us. So the number one concern, uh, that we get, the number one complaint that we get is traffic related. So these signs I think would be, uh, very beneficial. And if, if we had the ability, I would prefer to have. Um, two of them at the same time here, keeping the third one until it is no longer of any value to us.
That would help.
Okay, I'll move on. Um, we, in our last meeting, we had a presentation about the Simsberry Meadows Public Restroom Project. Um, I wanted to see if there was anything anyone wanted to add on this item.
You skipped the fleet maintenance software.
Did I?
Oh, we ended up taking that off of the final list.
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at my, my document. Sorry. Okay, my notes are on it.
Okay. I wanted to see where we wanted to go from here. We're, um, it's eight forty at night. Um, you know, from a, just so we, um, know what we need to do, um, from a timing perspective. Um, it, how important is it that we, um, make decisions tonight on these items?
I would defer to Amy on timing.
Um, so. We could defer it. It just defers it going to the board of finance and then. We probably wouldn't end up, we would have to close this current fiscal year of twenty one, and then all of these transfers would become part of twenty two. Not a big deal.
Yeah.
Just, it won't reflect in the fiscal year twenty one numbers. Obviously the money doesn't go anywhere.
Right.
But it does reduce our ability, if we do need additional items later in the year, it would, it would. Reduce the appropriation authority outside the budget, right, Amy? Because it all counts against their, their spending of what, two percent?
I'm not following.
There's a, there's a cap on how much they're allowed to approve outside of the budget and this would go against it in twenty two.
Oh, so yes, part of it.
So it's better to do it in twenty one, which has already been closed, which we, we know there are no more expenditures and it leaves us with a full. Allotment for twenty two, twenty three, uh, twenty one, twenty two with whatever's going to happen.
Yeah. And some of these items are legitimately time sensitive.
Right.
Um, okay. So how would folks like to proceed tonight?
Well, Eric, uh. Um, I've, I've got a couple of thoughts. Um. On the, typically our year end. Uh, transfers are done more with capital projects than operating projects historically. Um, I, I personally think there are a couple of things in the operating that, that I'm supportive of. Um, the items in the capital. Um, I'm supportive of. I have some concerns about the Simsberry Meadows, uh, rest, public restroom. Um. My concern is more, that's twenty three, twenty four. Budget. And they were talking at the last meeting about going out for a possible grant.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I could probably be persuaded to support that, but it would be reduced by whatever grant they got. Um, cause I don't think that, uh. It's fair to the citizens to take the, the surplus we have and give them a grant plus.
Right.
They, aren't they going for a grant that kept at 10 mil?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Um. But in the, uh. Operating, um, obviously I'm supportive of the, uh. Promise to Jordan. Uh. The item number two. And then the built item number six, uh, I gotta go down my list. Um, the lieutenant office space and the. Legal savings for, uh, Meadowwood. I think that covers everything. Sorry, guys, I'm kind of jumping around.
Right. I'm wondering if it would be helpful just to take it from the top and see if this board has consensus on how to move forward on each.
That's, that's fine, Eric. The feelings are hurt.
No.
Move, move forward on each item or move forward on. The process. Um, just clarify, clarity, please.
You know, I was just thinking about whether we would be comfortable, uh, you know, recommending the, um. Uh, the year end transfer at this point, or whether we would want to discuss it later. It's part of the budget process or perhaps not at all.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I'm, it's, I'm, I'm running low on fuel. Are you saying that one of the low, one of the options is to. Move forward approving all of these, you're saying?
I was just suggesting we just take it line by line and, um, and see if there's consensus on each of these. Whether to approve tonight or to talk about it as part of the budget process.
And then just do a consolidated motion at the end, right?
Precisely.
Versus, all right, are we going to vote on each one?
I'd rather not vote on each one if, if we come to consensus on it.
Yeah.
That sounds like a great plan. That'd be very helpful.
I'd be in agreement with Mike's. I don't know if he made a motion, but the items that he mentioned. Promise to Jordan because that's a decision we already made. We already voted on. The implementation software because it sounds like that is a time is of the essence. That can be a saving for us. Um, the building department, again, we already voted on that for temporary staffing. Um, the security cameras. I feel like that could help us. But I, I heard both Sean and Chris's argument about them, whether they'll work or not. Um, and the police, and the police base, the lieutenant's office.
I agree. I agree with Jackie. I'm still not sold on the implementation software. But the other four. Um, I would go for. But if it, if it truly is a savings matter. Um, other than just having somebody have to go back and re-enter or work in an old system that's, doesn't work.
It sounded like savings, Wendy, and it sounded, we have the staff and. If, if something happens with the software we have, right? There's no support. There's no help desk. So.
Is there any help desk anywhere?
Just so we're on the same page, um, can we mark in column F whether it's a, a yes or no for tonight to transfer?
Just do, is anybody against, is anybody against the promise to Jordan one?
No. No.
Is anybody against besides Wendy Muniz?
I'm supportive of that one.
I, I am as well. It's, it's, we have to implement this and we have a resource available.
If, if it makes sense, I'm for it.
Is anybody for coaching at this point? I think that goes in the budget is my opinion.
Yep.
That's my opinion too.
So put that in normal budget.
Yep.
Sorry, go ahead. This is your meeting.
Oh, I, Sean, you're doing great.
Um, library leave, I mean, we have to do that, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why can't, I, I miss, why can't that be in the budget?
Cause it's happening right now.
It was an unanticipated medical leave and we have to.
Got it.
So.
You gotta fund it.
Yeah.
Um, we already agreed to the building inspector.
Yeah.
Great.
Um.
This would go in the budget.
I think we should talk about this in the context of the budget.
Yep. Budget, budget.
Yep. Yep. Budget.
Budget and or, and or never.
Tomorrow.
I would be in favor of moving forward with the life safety analysis sooner than later.
Based on what I heard, I could too, just in the event that we could change our. Um. Public gathering to add more requirements.
Well, also it sounded like this could change. The dollar amount could change. So I would be forward, I would want to put it into the budget.
Okay.
Yeah. My only concern with the life safety is. That it, it wouldn't complicate our existing contract. I can't imagine it would because they. We get the final say in a public gathering permit.
True.
I think we'd have a problem if we capped attendance down there with the pack, but.
That's a good point.
So I'm, I'm hearing that that is a, a yes. And there are some, I think there are some logistical questions if it comes in conflict with any of our existing contracts.
I'll support as long as there's no conflicts with the existing contracts.
It's going to depend on what comes out of it, Mike. So we're going to have to do that and figure out if we implement it or not, right?
Yeah, I think you're right, Sean.
It's a need. It's a matter of, and as the chief said, we might be able to get it for a little bit less.
Okay. I can go with that.
Okay. I'm hearing consensus, Maria, on the life safety analysis. Um, I, I think I heard consensus on the lieutenant office space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I'll play ball there, yep.
Legal savings to Meadowwood.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, let them take us to court. No, let's, let's do that.
We've, we've done that before, Mike.
I know.
That had a couple more zeros in it.
It's, it's, it's been a long night. I'm sorry.
Security cameras, Sean moves that we put ring cameras in instead of a $6,000 camera.
But we're going to need 20 of them.
That, you can still get that for cheaper than 14. You can get, you can get a hundred ring cameras for this price.
Only if every time they press the button, it rings your cell phone, Sean.
Dude, I'm not talking about the doorbell. I'm talking about the ones you mount.
Oh, okay. One of those.
I, I want to be, I want to just be clarified my unclear statement earlier. I'm actually very much in support of the cameras. I was just saying in addition, I think we should make an appeal. We should, there should be an appeal to the, to, to the schools. That's all.
We understood, we understood you, buddy.
That's a good point, Chris.
Yeah, we understood you.
Yeah, definitely noted.
I think this is a yes, Eric, from what I'm hearing.
I'm hearing a yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Based on the previous conversation, I think the wood chipper is a yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Why is that not budget?
Yeah.
Because it's already, we're not, we're not trading it in. We own the budget. We bought a new wood chipper, right?
Yeah, we were going to trade it in and now we're not. We're going to turn it to Park and Rex. So that's why we're supplementing the 20,000.
So we're, what's, where's the 20? I asked this, where's the 20,000 going? Is it going to the, to pay like a pay for the trade to our internal?
So, nope. So what we, um, typically do, again, when we, um, when we think that either for a vehicle or a piece of equipment, if it still has essentially trade in value left. Is, um, that would come off of sort of the project price, if you will. Um, so we anticipated that we would have some trade in value for the wood chipper. Um, but again, if we cycle it down to parks now, um, it prevents essentially a C and R purchase in year six. That would be much more expensive than that. So it's just an opportunity to essentially cycle down a piece of equipment rather than purchasing a brand new piece of equipment that's in an out year of the C and R budget.
Okay. I'm a yes. All right. That makes sense.
I just wanted to just, we just stayed for the, for the point of pro, I brought up process earlier and this. For the next couple of things, I'm voting yes. I just wanted just to just state for the for the point of pro I brought up process earlier and just for the next couple of things I'm voting yes on. Just and I want people to understand why versus just saying yes, 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 because I don't know if we're gonna we're gonna have another opportunity to to illustrate why we chose some of this stuff and and kind of goes back to the half a million dollars here is is from tax derived revenues. And I look at taxpayer derived revenues. So when I look at the rest of these, these are taxpayer, these are items that the taxpayers have either already paid for in the past in their form they are and or likely going to be paying for them again in the future as they are replaced or renewed or whichever. And that's why fundamentally, when I look at this exercise, I look at I look at initiatives versus capital. And that's why you said, Sean, at some point, if you don't use the money, you're just gonna be building reserves up. This is I look at these types of events that are coming up here. This is where I believe that the taxpayers are at. Every one of them is getting something out of this versus some of the initiatives which are more targeted and more interest based. That's what I want to be clear on.
Yep, I agree.
Point could be well made.
I just can I make a C and R point, though? So I don't know which if we're going that we're moving all of these paying for them now, or we're gonna move them to next year. I'm not sure. I heard that. I don't know which way I heard that. But but next.
Wendy, I'll clarify. I'll say interrupt. What I'm saying is that I would I would prefer to use unallocated taxpayer dollars for things that the taxpayers are going to be asked for absolutely in the near future. Okay, we may not ask a taxpayer to again fund a promise to Jordan or executive coaching or the spear council or the the guidebooks and that does I'm just using this as examples and just trying to but we are going to ask the taxpayers to fund a wood chipper at some point. A sidewalk, the tennis court, the signage, the message board. So I'm saying there's an opportunity to pay for them now with the money they've already allocated for those. That's my.
Okay, so I just want to kind of counter that. And just just to say it a different way, though, is I I'm looking at next year's C and R 2023. And it goes up almost $2 million of need, right? So if we took the remainder of the money and moved it to our capital reserve funds, then we could look at these in relation to everything that we've already said we're gonna do in 2023. And then make the decision then because we'll have the money there to to do that then, rather than do it now. And we and and then do I know that next year's bill is going to be smaller because I moved it all to this year? Or will next year's bill grow because there's more capacity?
Wendy, we haven't agreed to do anything in 23. Those are aspirational.
They're projected.
They're aspirational placeholders.
They are.
And these would get prioritized over those if we vote yes tonight. If you don't think these should go ahead of those, then you should vote no to these tonight.
Well, we're paying for them now.
It doesn't matter. We still manage the capital of the town. And the point is the dollars come from the same people, the taxpayers. It's just a matter of when do they come from the taxpayers? We've already taxed people and we can either chuck the money in a savings account that does nothing for them. Or we can continue to pay for capital items, as Chris articulated, that we know we have to do. So it's either tax them again for that wood chipper in an upcoming budget or pay for it.
Tax them again.
If you put them in an upcoming budget and you tax for it, you're taxing for them again versus paying for it now, which something you've already taxed them for.
But if you're paying for them out of your general reserve fund, whether you put the money, they won't be paying for it.
Correct, but it's a timing issue. And again, we can. We can wait and shove all these to the budget and then we could do a $3 million, but I and that's fine, but some of these are time sensitive. It's a matter of timing. But we should always be paying for the highest priority items regardless of the timing. And I think what I heard Maria say right off the bat is town staff's opinion is all of these are the highest priority items at this point.
Okay, that I didn't hear that compared to everything that we so if somebody tells me that everything that's in that that's a potential for 202223, right? Because I didn't go back and look at all of them. What's here now are the cream of the crop and that we should pay for them now because they're going to be paid for next year? Is that a definitive answer?
So these are opportunities, right? A lot of them are opportunities because of need, timing, et cetera. But to Chris's point, we know we're going to have to pay for them. And you will. You may recall, unfortunately, the Board of Finance did take out our excess cash capacity for C and R. So really, technically, what we have to work with in the upcoming budget unless we dip into the capital reserve is about $416,000. One piece of equipment we know we need at the ice rink is going to take about 25 to 30% of that $416,000. So again, you know, I think this is just an opportunity for us to tackle some of those items that are on that list, right? Because folks have already, you know, paid for it, whether through it was building permit revenues that we had access of or a tax collection that came in, you know, at at our expected rate. But again, these are items that we know we're going to need to pay for. Do we pay for them now or do we wait until next year and then potentially pay for them out of capital reserve?
Right.
And paying for them now again versus an off book expenditure in the future leaves capacity for whatever's coming in the next what nine months of the year, whatever we've got left of the fiscal year. So we don't have to do this, but it's again, we beg and plead with the Board of Finance every year to give us more capacity for C and R. And in my opinion, we should not let this money just go in and build reserves needlessly.
And have not have access to it.
Yeah. And it will actually save us money next year because we will have this capacity within the budget from my viewpoint.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, we should go to the Board of Finance with with an honest, we think these are our highest priorities like we always do from our capital items. If we don't think that's the case, then we shouldn't approve them tonight.
Right. Okay, good.
And and I think many of these things actually bring value to the citizens. Many of these things are are do add value. So it and it's from our budget surplus, not from and we still are gonna have money to turn back, I believe. I read the numbers right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct, Mike. So you'll see that part of the proposed capital transfers, even if we were to take care of these C and R items now, we would still maybe making a contribution to the capital reserve of a little over $1 million as well as making sure that our unassigned fund balance remained at over 15 and a half percent.
Yeah. Yeah. And if we're getting half a percent at the bank, we're doing really good, which is a whole nother depressing thought.
All right, well, man, we were on a roll, buddy. Get back to it.
Okay, we're rolling. The sidewalk.
We committed to that plan.
Sidewalk design work. I would be supportive of this one. The sidewalk projects have been very meaningful to the residents who benefit from those. And this would allow us to, you know, do more sooner.
You had us at hello. Next.
Yeah.
All right. Sean, I would be in trouble, I think, if I voted against the material crushing.
I love the recycling.
It's a spend to save. We gotta do it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's good stuff.
It's also it's also, I mean, if I I don't. I don't think I'm Mr. Roy is just telling us if we are truly. This is a stewardship issue, right? We are actually, we are reducing our footprint, which is an initiative that I think we've all talked and spoken to as far as so.
Yeah. I just like that it saves us money, Chris, but yeah.
So that's a yes.
Material crushing is a yes. Where?
This would be a no. I think we're gonna table it. I think we're gonna table it.
I'm gonna ask one more time. I want this as a yes under Tom Roy to get these signs up. But if I'm the only one, so be it.
I'm a yes.
Right.
I'm in a yes for the signs.
I don't want it as an EDC work plan. I want it as a public works, put the signs up.
We're giving everything else.
Can we? Can we? Can we? Can we turn them down if we don't like the signs? I'm serious. I don't want to. I don't want to fund something and then get a sign that is 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 crap. You know, and it's out of harmony and whatever. I mean, it's so let's just not do something to do it. As you say, okay, I am. I am 100% serious that we should have a design review, not 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 analysis paralysis, but
Yep.
let's just not take a sign, okay? But I don't want to clutter. I don't. I don't want to clutter our talent. We already have so we already went through a sign study. We have. We have so we have way too many sciences it is. So let's just make sure they're appropriate.
I would say yes, but I'm gonna echo what Sean said and that this would go under Tom Roy.
I've seen the way Tom dresses, so I'm all.
Yeah, but Tom does beautiful. Tom does beautiful work. I I trust him implicitly to get this done in the character of our community.
Yes, I know. He drives. He drives around in an orange green truck.
All right, I'm moving on. That's a yes. I think the tennis courts.
Change, Eric.
Say that again.
A yes with a change.
With you mean not making it an EDC project?
Correct.
Yeah.
Just do it, right?
It's a just do it.
That's what I was thinking.
The tennis courts is going to save us money now if we do it.
Done.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, I'm all for the savings.
The variable message sign boards.
Yes.
Issues.
Safety issue.
Yeah.
Sorry, if you could just also on that item, you'll recall that the revised estimate we received today was slightly more than that. It was.
Closer to 35.
Yeah, do you have the exact number, Amy?
You know, I don't know if we can do the extra 3K Maria. That's a little bit. Yes, next.
Okay, thank you.
Put an asterisk there.
We're going to put off the discussion on the on the restroom.
Yeah, that's that's grant slash future.
Pending the outcome.
Yeah.
CIP.
Is there any other feedback you need from us before we vote?
Um, just any questions in terms of the remainder going to capital reserve, fund balance, or any of the assigned fund balances? I think those were very straightforward, but just want to just make sure folks are comfortable with that before, you know, you move forward.
That is a lovely opinion of ours. We have no say in that matter, but I'm happy to send it over. I mean, I think the Board of Finance rightfully so needs to make that decision. Obviously, they need us to initiate the transfer to have the discussion. So I'm fine initiating the transfer, but ultimately that's their decision of where it goes, right?
So just so you know, that million dollar number, since some projects were not voted for, it would actually increase a little bit. So when it goes to the Board of Finance, it'll be increased just to.
Sure.
But you're right, it will be be their decision as to what they want the fund balance percentage to be.
But I mean, at the end of the day, we've 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 dealt with items that are going to be taxed for with money that has already been taken from the residents as tax dollars. We're putting money. We're putting money aside for future capital items, Wendy, to your concern about what are we gonna do in 2223 and beyond, which some of the capacity can come out of there. And we're also recommending that there is some fund balance building here as well. Right, Amy? I mean, it's it's a it's a it's a hitting all three wheels of from a capital management and a financial management standpoint.
Right. Hey, Eric, could I just make one more note on the wave wave finding signage? Can it be DPW with working with Main Street? Because I believe they're the two that started with this. And I don't know if that's Melissa that was adding the comments to the chart.
Yeah, if that I'd be supportive of that if that aligns with with a, you know, a project that they've that they've done.
Yeah, I believe they started it.
Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts before we vote? Is there a motion effective October 13, 2021 to approve the general fund and capital transfer requests as presented on the Excel spreadsheet?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. I know it's a long process, but I really appreciate the energy and in time you, you know, you spent on that this evening. That's just incredibly helpful for us as an organization. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Maria and staff, there was nothing on here that was crazy. And I appreciate the discussion to get us to this point.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. You know, clearly reflected Board of Selectmen, you know, goals and priorities in many of these items, too. I I know we have. It's getting late. We have item F, which is the budget status report. Are folks okay to move forward with that? Or we want to table that for the next meeting?
Actually, you're all set, Eric, because Amy gave you the overview at the beginning. So I think I think we're all set, Amy, right?
Yeah, the budget's fine.
We're good.
All right, appointments and.
Let's y'all want to hear it again. I mean, I'm good.
I mean, I do, but no one else does. So why don't we just? Why don't we just keep going?
Is there a motion effective October 13, 2021 to appoint Lydia Tadone as a regular member representing the Board of Education to the sustainability team replacing Jen Bachelot?
Move that.
I'll second it.
Oh.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 There are motion effective October 13, 2021 to reappoint Robert Crowther and Ronald Jodas to the Economic Development Commission for three year terms retroactive to October 10, 2021 and expiring October 10, 2024.
So Eric, I would I guess maybe want to change this or table this until after the election.
Um, you want to elaborate, Jackie?
The other members are their commissions start and end in December. So I think that this would make them in line with that. Like I said, just after the election.
Is this just a is this just a process request and not a not a not a personnel request, so to speak?
Right, it's a process.
I might be able to elaborate on the history, Jackie. So we do have a handful of boards and committees just because of being created by ordinance or charter as opposed to what's called a temporary committee. So most of our what are considered temporary committees. Those do mirror the Board of Selectmen terms, but then we do have some things such as the EDC with the ordinance when it's created and the effective date. So the EDC is created essentially by ordinance. And that's why those terms are a little funky and off. We do have a handful of oddball, again, committees and commissions that were created by ordinance. They're not considered temporary, which is why they don't necessarily line up with the Board of Selectmen terms.
But Jackie's point is right. We should line them all up. If we had a bunch more coming in December, we should just do them all at the same time versus piecemeal. So I'd support a motion to to extend their terms until the December, whatever, the first Board of Select meeting and then deal with it in with with all of the folks at the same time.
It's cool by me.
I would second that.
So I would just be changing the emotion, the motion. Oh, I guess would we just be tabling this until that meeting?
I mean, they're unappointed at this point. So if you just want to extend their current term until that December, whatever, eighth date so that they can sit with the other members. I mean, I think it's probably the right way to do it.
Yep.
There are motion to extend the terms of Robert Crowther and Ronald Jodas up through our first the first meeting of the next Board of Selectmen.
Oh, Maria's coming up.
You know, it's actually pretty specific. I don't know if you recall, but when we did the new EDC ordinance, there were also limitations in terms of how long somebody could serve. And it was very specific about three year terms. So a person could do two, three year terms, except for the very first batch of folks. Because of staggering, they could do a four year term and then a three year term. The other exception under the ordinance is if somebody completed a partial term of somebody else, but it was very specific in the wording to three years. So for example, with Bob and Ron, if you did three years, extended their term and then did three years as it calls for under the ordinance, they would technically be beyond the amount of time they're allowed to serve under the ordinance. Does that make sense?
It does, except we can just only appoint them for two years and 11 months and whatever days. So I mean, we can fix this problem or we can just table it and they can't serve until then. They're effectively unappointed right now. So they can either do nothing.
They could continue.
Or they can keep serving and we can just figure out the dates on December 6.
That would probably be cleaner if we were to do that, just to allow them to continue to serve. And I could work through that timing issue with Bob with the ordinance. I just want to make sure we don't violate the ordinance. So that would probably be cleanest.
If the ordinance is written that we can't extend someone's term, then we need to fix the ordinance because that's ridiculous. So we should be able to extend someone's term.
Right.
And I would say that there's no way this violates the spirit of the ordinance and that we can reappoint them for again, for two years, 11 months and whatever days so that they don't go over two, three year terms.
Yeah, if you did that, correct. Right, if you do that, that would be correct.
So I move that we extend their term until December 6. Right, Eric?
I'll second that.
Right, Eric, that's our, that's our first meeting, that's the Monday in January, or in December.
Yeah, I heard a second, was that you, Jackie?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, um, any feedback on the minutes from our last meeting, September twenty-seventh? Are there any liaison and subcommittee reports?
I have one, just really quick, um, I know it's late, Public Building Met, and they met with Tekton. And they are starting the process for the new Latimer Lane School, that's why I wanted to bring it up, I feel like it's pretty important, yep, very exciting. And they already have a draft of the plan, what it's gonna look like, so please, you know, I can get you more information, but. They've already started, and they are hoping to actually start construction in the spring of this coming year, so that was my update.
Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
I have one. I've, this is why the next first selectman needs to move these reports to the beginning of the meeting, so I'm just putting that out.
Not gonna get you, um, anyway, nobody wants to hear us talk, Wendy.
Well, you want, some of this is important, like what I'm gonna say, that I heard on this, I sat in, I didn't sit in, I listened to the zoning meetings. Um, and it turns out that on ten eighteen, they're having a public audience on, put, putting a moratorium on the marijuana sales. So, I I would not have known that if I didn't listen to that meeting, that they were gonna discuss it in public audience. So I'm sharing it with all of you that that's happening. And then the other thing that I heard is that zoning is looking at the ADU PA twenty-one, twenty-nine. Um, and scheduling a public hearing for the opt-out potential of the state bill. Um, and just to know that that is going to end up coming to the Board of Selectmen eventually, because it has to have a two-thirds vote by us. So we will be impacted and have to pay attention, it's not due till twenty twenty-three, but it's coming, and it's important. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Good updates, and to be clear, the moratorium on the marijuana situation is temporary, or would be temporary if they move forward with it.
You, you, you're different, you set a timeline of six months to or a year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Anything, any other reports? Uh, whoop, getting back to my script, um, anything on our communication, anyone wanted to raise? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys, good meeting.